All right, we ready? Okay. I'd like to call tonight's workshop meeting to order for the Scarborough School Board for Thursday, July 30th, if I could please have tonight's attendance.
Sure. Ms. Durgen?
Yeah.
Mrs. Giftos?
Yeah.
Dr. Gill?
Here.
Ms. Casalonas?
Here.
Ms. Leighton?
Here.
Mrs. Seither? We see her, but I think she's having a problem with her audio, so we'll go on. Mrs. Turner?
Here.
And Mr. Bennett?
Here.
Right. And if you could please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right. Moving on, 4.0, are there any adjustments to tonight's agenda? Okay. I know I don't have any, and seeing that there are none, we're going to move into public comment. And before we go there, I just want to read something really quick about public comments tonight. There are two ways in which to provide them. One, you can email us at publiccomment@scarbrowschools.org. I'll keep an eye on that email box. We have a few that have already come in today, and we'll read those statements into the public record. Or for those members on the Zoom meeting, if you want to raise your hand, we can promote you in as an attendee so that you can speak. Raising your hand is similar to lining up behind the podium at the public settings. You'll be placed into the order of your arrival in the queue. Due to recent issues in other district Zoom meetings and for security purposes, we ask that you use your legal name to be recognized for the public comments. And please also state your full name and address, including the town, if you are not a Scarborough resident for our record. Each member interested in speaking is invited to comment one time for approximately three minutes, and we will do our very best to keep time consistent amongst all the participants. Please refrain from directing statements at or about individuals. And also, please note, the board will not be replying or responding to the comments made this evening during public comments. All right. Um, so for, again, the folks on the Zoom, if you want to raise questions or ask comments, raise your hand, and I will bring you over. Right now, we do have three comments that were sent in, so I'm going to go ahead and read those. The first one is from Amelia Kurtz at 1 Howard Lane. Hello, I'll be watching this evening, eager to learn what is coming for the school year. I was hoping you could please clarify a few questions for me. Is the plan being discussed this evening the result of the committee that was formed to consider options for the school year? Will we be able to see a copy of the plan? I couldn't find one online. And given that the public comment is prior to hearing the plan, will there be opportunities for parents and the public to weigh in on the options before a final decision is made? And who ultimately will make the final decision? So I'm already going to break my first rule. And there is a copy of the plan online. If you go to the scarbrowschools.org page, right on the front, there is a draft reopening school plan, right there in the center of the page, so you could go ahead and follow along with us as we go through tonight. From Heidi Anieri, and I apologize if I said your name incorrectly. Would it be possible to request a friend or two to go on the same days if we are following the hybrid model? I am referencing ease of childcare, transportation, pods and cohorts of remote learning that would be made easier and safer if kids were also able to be kept consistent during both in-person and remote learning. And she's actually one of our nurses at the high school and a parent of a fifth grader. And lastly, Joanna Wallace has sent one in. Good afternoon, I am submitting a public comment for July 30th School Board meeting. I am hopeful Scarborough Schools will provide students with the option for a meaningful remote learning experience due to the COVID-19 pandemic. I strongly advocate the remote learning involve one or more Scarborough School teachers, providing direct instruction for remote learners in each class, grade, or subject. It is also important for teachers to check in with students or parents live at least once a day. The daily live contact between teachers and students is listed by the main DOE expectations for hybrid and remote learning. In addition, remote learners should be held to the same learning outcomes as in-person students, including issuing of graded report cards. Thank you. All right. And Ashley, I've promoted you to talk. If you could take yourself off mute, you should be able to speak.
Hi, good evening. Actually, I am a friend of Ashley's. My name is Leslie Dyer, I live at 218 Holmes Road in Scarborough. I have a first grader, third grader, and fifth grader going into the Scarborough School Department. My question is, I guess, you know, I'm a teacher as well in a local district, and I'm wondering, when are we going to hear what days if we choose to go into yellow? What days will our children be going to school? Because, I guess, in higher childcare? So I'm curious on, when are we going to find out when our kids are going to school? And how often they're going to school? Because I know that if we keep on waiting, it's really challenging. Like I said, I'm a teacher, I'm expected to go back five days a week. I don't really know who to, like... I need to find someone to take care of my children so I can go back as a teacher myself. So when are we going to hear kind of a final decision? If we're in red, here's the story. If we're in yellow, here's the story. If we're in green, this is what's going to happen.
Thank you. I'm going to give it just a moment in case anyone else would like to make a public comment tonight. Denise, I've opened you up to speak, if you could take yourself off mute.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay. Denise Blaine, I am a teacher at Scarborough Schools. I've been there for about 19 years. I sat on the START Committee to, I guess, put this plan together. I say that because I looked at the plan today, and I found it far more detailed than what I left my committee with. So I'm assuming there was some work done there in the process. My statement tonight is, is just pretty simple. We need communication, and by "we," I mean staff, parents, and the community in general. I know that this is the first time the board is seeing the plan. I know that this is the first time parents are seeing the plan. I feel like communication in this whole process has been lacking, and that's my opinion, and my opinion only. But I, as we move to August, I still don't know when I'm going to school. My sister still doesn't know how she's going to have childcare. I have parents emailing me about what's going to happen with SATs and courses, and I just am getting really frustrated. And I would encourage the board and administration to put some more communication out there as soon as they can to help clarify and frankly ease anxiety and stress that your staff and I think your community are feeling. Lastly, I would just like to say publicly, thank you for all your work that you did with the budget. I know it was not easy, and the Finance Committee, Sarah, and everyone that was involved, you did an amazing job, and thank you for what you did. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Betsy, I've promoted you.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
I can hear you.
Great. Elizabeth Chalmers, I live at 17 Fairway Drive. I have a rising 10th grader and 12th grader at the high school, and I was a member of the task force, mostly working with the 9 to 12 academic team. And I apologize, but I haven't read the plan that got posted yet. But I just wanted to advocate for some more time for teachers and staff to plan. I think that they're going to have to be, we're all going to have to be ready to switch from red to yellow to green and back again potentially, and knowing that there will probably be students who are learning from home entirely, that parents may choose that route for their kids. And I think that our staff needs more time to collaborate and to plan and to learn how to use some of the tools that are available to them. And so I'd like to advocate for the START Day for students to be pushed back. And I don't know if that was brought forward in the plan or not, just from a parent perspective. I think we all want our students to get more out of school when it starts up again in the fall. We know that the spring plan was just sort of a stopgap for finishing out the year, but we want our students to learn the best that they can under the circumstances. And I think that our staff really needs time to plan that well. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We did receive another public comment from Courtney Graffis, who lives in Portland and is a school employee. I'm wondering if outdoor learning has been considered for Scarborough Schools in order to decrease indoor exposure to one another. I'm also wondering if it is possible to consider a Monday, Thursday, and a Tuesday-Friday hybrid model to allow students to have in-person instruction throughout the week rather than two days in a row? Thank you very much, Courtney. Okay. I'm going to give it one more minute in case anyone else would like to speak. Okay. All right. Seeing that, I'm going to go ahead and close public comments. Thank you. And then moving into the workshop portion for the opening plan of the School Transition Reopen/Redesign Task Force.
Okay, so thank you very much. This is Superintendent Prince here, and we're talking about the reopening plan. I'd just like to preface, I thank you for your patience across the state of Maine. Obviously, every district is reopening their plans and talking about them, and there's a lot of work to be done. And tonight, we have the affordability to share with you our best thinking at this time. And I would also like to acknowledge the School Transition Reopen/Redesign Task Force. Their task was to review the most current directives and recommendations from the main Department of Ed and CDC, to consider input from the public health officials, including the district physician and public safety, and to develop a plan to present to the school board inclusive of the following elements: physical reentry needs and protocols, health and wellness needs and protocols, academic planning, and social emotional wellness plan. Next slide, if possible. This team met four times in June. There were four committees with 90 participants. People from the health, operations, academics, social, emotional wellness, and pretty much everybody, all 90 participants, lived in Scarborough for the most part. We configured three plans for learning: a remote, a hybrid, and an in-person, planning in line with the current Department of Ed and CDC guidelines. In June, surveys went to students, families, and staff, and in July, surveys to families and staff. And we appreciate the feedback. We had a great response, and it really helped drive our plan that we're proposing tonight. Requirements from DOE and CDC. Students and staff will be required to wear face coverings in all areas of the school. That does include buses, in-group restrooms, and when traveling, traveling in the hallways and in classrooms. You've heard a lot about physical distancing, and the requirement for that is three to six feet for students. So when students are walking down the hallway or wherever, they need to be three to six feet apart. And everybody must conduct a daily self-check for symptoms to make sure that we're on top of this and we're looking at prevention. So that self-check is really important as well. Some requirements. Protocols for return to school after illness. We have protocols, again, that the committee worked on, and it's all set to go. We have access to additional safety materials as needed, like shields, gloves, and gowns. And we also will be requiring for people to increase their hand hygiene, and we'll have training and protocols for that as well. I'm going to turn this over to Diane.
So the next slide is a description of the three models that our district, just like every other district in the state, was asked to create. This is the same, or similar to the stoplight that I've been talking with you about since this has started. And so, in Level 1 is remote learning. That would be if all instruction was remote. And that would be because the governor would have issued a stay-at-home order, or the Department of Education and the CDC are recommending a school to be closed. During Level 1, only essential workers are allowed at school, and instruction is remote, and every building would have specific remote learning protocols and procedures. So this is just the broad overview, and then we're going to dig in as the presentation continues. Level 2 is hybrid, if there is minimal or moderate spread where we live. And that is a combination of both remote instruction and in-person instruction. And if we were in the yellow, that would be because the governor has modified the stay-at-home order and has allowed for in-person school if the conditions that Sandy just spoke about are met. Those are requirements, those are not choices, those six things that he talked about. If the CDC recommends three to six feet of social distancing within classroom settings, which is the case right now, again, one of the things that we need to keep in mind is that, you know, that we're working on a moving target, and so recommendations are fluid. But considering that recommendation, in order to meet that requirement, groups of students would alternate between in-person days of learning and synchronous remote days of learning. And the purpose of that really is to limit the number of students in the building at any one time so that we reduce the risk to the greatest degree possible. And as distancing and safety requirements might be relaxed, so for example, if the three to six foot requirement was lifted, then we would be able to reconsider our plan and move towards 100% of K to 5 students attending in-person full-time. And that really is based upon the science that shows that our younger students are less affected, whereas our older students are more like adults in terms of how they are at risk. In Level 3, in-person, that would be if it is determined that there is low or no spread of COVID-19, and in green, all students would be attending school. That also means that there's no stay-at-home order, and that the restrictions on school activities and gatherings would be limited. Although students would all be in school, we might still be required to employ specific procedures because throughout all of this process, we will be required to follow any state or CDC mandates. And so, that may also limit some activities that students are able to do in order to reduce the risk of exposure, and again, really making sure that we're following the requirements. So all of these talk about, all of these hinge on this red, yellow, and green metric. And so, as we think about where we see our district, or even schools, there are many factors that are considered that in making those determinations. The first is local case information. So for example, if, if there were some cases that were specific here in Scarborough, even though Cumberland County might be in the yellow, we might decide that we need to be in the red, or the CDC might tell us that our specific community needs to be in the red. And so there is that local case information. There's also the bi-weekly metric that the main Department of Education and the Governor's Office is putting out. Those metrics are going to be posted on the main DOE website. Every two weeks, the first metric is going to be posted tomorrow. I believe the governor might be holding a press conference, since this is the first release of the metric tomorrow afternoon. So that's going to be another piece of information for us. And then obviously, as I've already stated, the CDC recommendation. And again, we're going into all of this understanding that there may be the need for us to flex between levels, dependent on changing conditions during the 2020, 2021 school year. And that's why we've been very thoughtful in coming up with the plan that you're going to see unveiled tonight.
I think that's my cue. Let me walk you through the hybrid model, because that is the model that our Leadership Council spent quite a bit of time discussing. We began that process by doing a deep study of all of the recommendations made by each of the four subcommittees from the START Team. We wanted to honor all, as many of the recommendations as we possibly could in putting a design together that would work well for our students, our families, and our staff. So this hybrid model entails taking the student population of each school and dividing it into two cohort groups. So half of the students, for example, on Monday and Tuesday... So half of the students, for example, on Monday and Tuesday in cohort A, they would be onsite in the school. They would be practicing those safety measures, but they would be attending, physically attending school on Monday and Tuesday. They would then be remote on Thursday and Friday. So the remote learning, the other half of the school population cohort B would be involved in remote learning during that day on Monday. We also, and I'll talk a little bit more about this in future slides, but we will be offering, it was important to the START committee that families have a choice, a remote option, and we want to honor that. So there will be a group of students whose families choose for them to do their learning remotely throughout the year. There's also a group of students who, based on their needs, will need to be in school every day. So our school schedules across K-12 will be Monday and Tuesday cohort A onsite. Wednesday is a little different. Wednesday for three hours in the morning. Groups A, B and C will be learning. They'll be continuing their learning on Wednesday morning remotely. Those students in cohort D will still come to school for the half-day. Thursday and Friday cohort B will be onsite in the schools and cohort A will be learning remotely. Wednesday afternoon is the time when staff will be involved in PD and planning to provide that continuity and the equity across their learning, the students' learning, whether in school or remote. So please note that as we put these designs together, we were really aimed at providing as much consistency for families and students as possible while maintaining and honoring the safety recommendations as well. In terms of the time, the expected time for a school day, we wanted the group, wanted to stay as close to our traditional times and schedules as possible. So across all schools, the expectation, whether in-person or remote, is that students would be involved in a full day of learning. Please note that in terms of these times, depending on the choices and the transportation, these are target times. For example, if a large number of families at Wentworth School decide they want to drop off their children, we will need to make, may need to make some accommodations in terms of drop-offs and pickups in order to be as efficient as possible. Also in terms of transportation and runs and bus runs, we'll need to also figure out those so that we have the most effective system. There is much discussion about how we're going to identify each of the cohort groups because as was stated earlier, many families would be, need that information to provide daycare and to begin to set their schedules. We wish we could give that to you two weeks ago, but we are working as hard as we can. We're running different models. And Dawn may be able to speak a little bit more about that. Our IT team is running different models by school and then looking to honor and to preserve family schedules. That was a very strong recommendation from the START team committee was that because we're running two separate schedules, that families needed to be on the same schedule. Also note in terms of scheduling for the school day that we are not talking about a remote day where students are latched onto their computers the entire time. You'll notice, I'll talk a little bit in the academic recommendations, that there be a balance of online and offline. This is particularly important for K-5. We do, we heard the recommendation loud and clear from the survey data that there needs to be more synchronous live teacher-student interaction time. And we're going to look to maximize that, but it would not be a full day with students sitting staring at screens all day. So we are going to commit to dedicate a time for that and the building principals are beginning to work on what that might look like. While the, most of our time was spent on the hybrid, I'd like to talk a little bit about the red remote learning model. The schedule, the daily schedule would stay the same. In essence, because we're offering a remote option, we really do need to be thinking and planning for a rigorous remote learning experience for all students. Should we need to move into the red remote learning, there's that consistency of the same schedule for all students. And again, K-5 would have a dedicated time for that synchronous learning. And 612 would follow, even in red, would follow their regular course schedules and attend classes remotely. We will, similar to last spring, deploy school devices for all students, including earbuds. And we will work to support everyone in terms of providing the connectivity that is needed. So the green in-person, which is probably the days we long for pre-COVID. But the green in-person, should those safety protocols and requirements become a little looser, we will be able to have all students onsite daily. Please note that as we've been working with our area colleagues and area districts, every school district has a different set of constraints that it's working from. So you may hear about how Biddeford or Yarmouth or Falmouth is doing things for their elementary students or for their middle school students, but they have very different, just like we have very different sets of facilities with our district. So we really took a look and safety first and took a look at our facilities to ensure that we maintain as best we can for students, all the safety measures that we need to put in place for them as well as for staff and the operations folks and the safety folks will talk a little bit more about that as well. So the full remote option, the START team was in full support of offering this option. And our survey data, we have a sense of those folks who would like their students to stay home and access the remote option. So during the week of August 3rd, we're going to survey families where they can, will be asked whether or not they want to send their children. And it, for each child, what their learning preference or their learning model preference is for each child and their family. Please know that we want to be as flexible as possible and we will, folks who select this option, we will, they will have an opportunity to rethink that option every marking period. We want to get that information in as soon as we possibly can so that we can complete the process at identifying the cohort group so we can get that information out to families as quickly as possible. I believe this is the opportunity for questions at this point in time.
Before we get into questions, just as a reminder, this is the introduction. We still have four discrete sections in which will describe in greater detail the work of the academic group, the health group, the operations group and the social emotional recommendations as well. So, you know, if you have specific questions in any of those four areas, we are going to be providing more than you've seen to, to this point.
Before I open it up, two questions from the board. I did get two more emails just as we were closing out public comment. And I didn't want to interrupt the beginning of the presentation. The first is from Kate Swinburne. Parent and a teacher in the district, thank you for all your hard work on coming up with a plan for getting back to school. As a teacher in the district and a parent, I'm wondering what is the start date at this point? Thinking as a teacher, we need, we need more time to plan and learn new protocols. As a parent, I am thinking I'm going to need more time to finalize plans when I am teaching and my kids are at home. And from William Cabana, he teaches sixth grade at Scarborough Middle School. First and foremost, I want to thank everyone for their work on the reopening committees this summer. I'm seeking some clarification on the level two yellow hybrid plan for grades six through 12. It states that students will follow regular class schedule and attend classes remotely. Does this imply that teachers at these phase levels will be instructing students in-person and remotely at the same time? If so, some additional information about how this would look across different phase levels would be useful as it greatly impacts how our classrooms will look upon return and could present some unique challenges with teaching strategies and class management. Thank you. All right. Hillary, you are first up.
So, um, thank you, everybody. And actually, that question from Will actually is very similar to my question. I'm wondering if cohort A is in-person on Monday and Tuesday and cohort B is involved in remote learning, is that same teacher expected to do both of those at the same time?
Depends on the phase level and the teaming and the structure. The intent is to provide a similar experience for all students. And that's the piece where we need the extra time to work with our teachers to do that. We do want to try to put cohorts and pods, I think the term now is pods together or teams of teachers so that they can work together. One teacher would maybe monitoring and providing the lesson to those onsite, but also displaying through a camera, the lesson to the students at home. And there would be an assignment or a learning activity provided the students in class may be working on one at learning activity and the students may be working in a different way, but on the same learning activity as much as possible.
Okay, so, so you said, so I just, I had concerns about one teacher being responsible for both in-person learning and remote learning at the same time. And you're saying that that will not be the case.
That, that may be the case depending on the skillset of the teacher. That may be the case depending on the situation and the course. What we're trying to do is figure out what those teamings might look like so that one teacher or an ed tech may be helping to monitor those who are onsite while the teacher in-person is working most of those students in class. So we're going to try, we're trying to make it as equitable as possible for all students. And in this way, we would be able to engage students in learning. If we split the two groups and basically we're doing a half-year for one group and a half-year for another, it is a model and a way in which we can accelerate and scaffold the learning for students.
I've got a quick one. Hillary, thank you. I had that same question. And I'm wondering, how are we going to manage concerns with the remote learners and not seeing other students in the classroom due to maybe FERPA, you know, FERPA concerns or if their parents have not signed off on them being videoed or photoed?
In terms of FERPA, FERPA is really about educational record. It's less about whether or not students see each other learning because onsite on a normal traditional school schedule, students see each other learning. It's really about the recording and what we do with that educational record. We will need to set expectations. We will need to communicate with parents about what the expectations are with live virtual meetings. And we will need to work with students about what those, and help them set those routines and expectations when we're in a remote environment. Just like you're building classroom routines and expectations within a classroom in the fall. We will need to have some sign-offs on some pieces. We are not recommending recording any of these instructional sessions if it involves students or student responses. So we're also looking at different models where sometimes maybe what is displayed is a recorded piece so students can then access it or either using backgrounds or camera angles not to record the students while doing the live instruction.
Thank you. Max?
I just had a question regarding like the changing of the colors. I know you had mentioned that we would probably end up going like from red or to yellow or to green at different points within this, the fall semester. And I was wondering like, am I, if I'm in group B and I wake up on Thursday morning and we're in the red and like we were doing yellow beforehand, am I just going to like not go to school that day? Like, how often is this expected to change? I know you had mentioned like every two weeks, the metric would come out. Is that like, are we taking what our schedule is on a bi-weekly basis? I just want to know what that looks like.
My understanding is that those metrics will come out every two weeks. So we have two metrics to view before the start of our school year. But as Diane shared, that it also depends on our local situation. We're trying to figure out how we might do that. There is additional guidance that is supposed to be coming to us. Diane, you want to speak to that? That would be wonderful.
Yeah, I was just going to add in that, you know, those metrics or the local situations that Monique talked about are going to influence ultimately the superintendent's decision to call school, right? So if you think about it, kind of like an emergent situation, right? So if we're in the yellow and a set of circumstance happens that we need to go in the red, that will ultimately be Superintendent Prince's decision to, to move us into that. And again, what we're trying to do is to set up these systems so that if we did need to move into red, we wouldn't have to have a, a week off from school like had to happen in the spring because we were starting everything from scratch. Sandy, do you want to add anything else to that?
Yeah, it's probably be very similar to like a snow day. So we would make sure that we do an all-call. We would put it on our website, email. And we would communicate that as soon as we get an indicator that we have changed from like yellow to green or yellow to red. So it will be important for us to do that. And I would suspect that you would have a far, over the weekend, I would expect that you would get a call about the change. Because again, every two weeks on a Friday, the commissioner will come out with any changes. So I appreciate that input and question and we will make sure that we communicate that.
Awesome. I just envision like people getting really frustrated with a constantly shifting schedule, which I know you guys have no control over and I know that we can't control what color we are. That's just like a concern that I think we would have to face at some point.
The other piece that I would just add, Max, is like those metrics come out bi-weekly. But even if there is a small shift in the metric, it doesn't necessarily mean that we're changing what we're doing. It informs our practice, but it doesn't dictate our practice. So we're not necessarily anticipating every two weeks, here's what we're doing for these two weeks. Here's what we're doing for those two weeks. We're really anticipating, you know, starting at a point and, and probably staying in that point unless local conditions really, you know, change to the positive or negative.
Nick?
Yeah, actually, my question is almost identical to Max's. And so the only thing I want, I'm going to add is just basically to say that as I was thinking about this, looking at the, at our plan, but also looking on the state website, I was thinking that obviously coming down the stoplight is more serious than going up. In other words, going from green to yellow or yellow to red is something that really requires an immediate response. Whereas if you're going the other way, you have a little more, you would seem to have a little more flexibility as to how urgent that has to be. And that speaks to exactly what you just said, Diane, that, you know, I think it's going to be really important for us to, to try and obviously get as much in-person learning for our students as is safe, but also to do so in a way that is limited, that limits the disruption to our families. And so to Max's point, you know, every two weeks on Friday, it would be like a game show. If all of a sudden it was like, what color are we this week? And I mean, that would be really intense for our families. And so I'm glad to hear that. And that's the way I read it too, Diane, that, you know, it guides our practice. It doesn't dictate our practice, which is the perfect way to put it. So thank you for saying that.
You're welcome.
Alicia?
Thank you. I have two questions. One is the description of the yellow hybrid version indicates that as soon as it seems feasible, we would move K-5 into fully in-person. feasible, we would move K-5 into fully in-person instruction. I'm wondering if that means necessarily that 612 will only occur when we're in green? And my second question is, who is going to be making the determination of the qualifications for students to fall in, in the Group D, which will qualify for fully in-person instruction? If that's going to be administration and if parents will have input into that as they will with the remote version? Because it seems as though there will be some limitations. And I'm just wondering, when we talk about equity, who's, what, what the qualifications will be? And, and who will be assessing that? And if there's an appeal process or, or what that will look like?
So I'm not having done this before. It's a great question, but I would, I typically work with my administrative team to make a decision. I would not do this alone. I, I think it could get a little challenging to try to seek input from the public about whether or not we should change our course from like green to yellow or whatever. I would look at this, Alicia, as a way to pull in my key administrators, probably here at Central Office, and look at the data and make a decision. That's my best thinking at this point in time.
Well, I, maybe I wasn't, didn't describe it well, Sandy. I, what I meant was, um, there's this Group D of, of students who will qualify for fully in-person instruction. And, and my question was, who, who decides what the qualifications are to, to become part of that cohort group? And, and what are they?
I'm wondering if Chris Rhodey, who's our Assistant Special Services Director, might be able to speak to that question. Chris, you're on, right?
Yes, I am.
Thank you.
Sure. So, you know, certainly one group that we'd be looking at very closely would be four Group D, these students with IEPs. And what Allison Marquez, the director, and I have been looking at is trying to figure out how many of those students we can get in for four days a week. And there's a couple of factors driving that. The first would be that, you know, we wanna try to stay in compliance with student IEPs, even given our adjusted schedule, to make sure that our students with disabilities are getting service time that they're entitled to through their IEPs. And also that we're providing instruction that allows students to make meaningful gains towards the goals in their IEP. So at this point, I would say, you know, we're not sure how many students with IEPs will be able to have in that Group D, but certainly our goal is to have as many students as possible. And that work will be done once we know a little bit more about the building schedules and people looking at the size of classrooms and those pieces. So, so Alicia, that, that is certainly like one, one group of students that we're hoping to include as many of them as we can in that Group D.
Thank you. And then, and then I was wondering if somebody could answer the question about the six through 12? What, if, if their return to school will occur in the yellow or only if in the green?
So up to this point, um, that, it, it's written with that qualifier because again, that's linked to the science and also to some of the recommendations from the DOE to this point. So, you know, again, we are gonna continuously loop back to what is the science saying about the level of safety for students to return? And we're also going to link back to what are the recommendations from our Department of Education and from the CDC?
Great.
Thank you.
Kristin?
Yeah, I had a question about if we do move from yellow to green. And parents, if they have opted in to do the two days in, but then we switch to green and at that point they would like to switch to remote, will they have that choice? If they're not comfortable with the full five days in whatever the new safety requirements are in the green, can they switch at that point?
So that's a great question and one that we haven't really discussed yet. So I'm going to add it to our list.
Okay. Thank you.
Sarah?
Thanks, Leanne. Um, you guys may, Diane, you may be getting to this. So if you, you are, you can just table it. But I guess my question is just around what happens regardless of what color, what phase we're in, well, I guess yellow or green. If a student is test positive or a family member of a student tests positive, what's our plan? How do we, where do we go from there? Do we automatically move into red? Does this that classroom or that pod or cohort move into red? And so how, how do we go about handling that?
But do you think that we're gonna get into that a little bit more during the health section? So if we could put that on for a few minutes? Thank you.
Yep, that's fine. And then, yeah, nor is, and then I guess, um, maybe Monique, just to follow up to Hillary's question. I'm sure there was a lot of conversation and, and through analysis done on the different options for learning at the same time. I guess I would just be curious to know a little bit more about the option to, to not do synchronous learning. So in, in other cases, have your pod and you have a teacher, you know, teaching remote and she kinda moves, he or she moves with the classroom. So they're remote one day and then they're in-person the next, but not doing both at the same time. I don't actually know if we have enough staff to do that, but I'm just curious sort if that was part of the discussion and why that was, you know, ruled out if it was.
Yes, we did have a conversation around that. We are quite fortunate in Scarborough that we have within our campus sufficient bandwidth to be able to provide live synchronous instruction as well as asynchronous instruction. We heard very clearly from the community, both in survey data and from the participants on the START team, that they wanted more rigorous, live synchronous instruction. And if it is going to be rigorous, if you're doing one day, a teacher is doing instruction to half their group one day and then half their group the other day, you're talking about a half a year of learning. And so the opportunity to have and work with those students, and this is where we're still working out, and the building principals, who are the experts in making very large, complex buildings work incredibly well, are still working on the details of staffing and the configurations and how that might work. I'm in the process of researching professional development to help support teachers. Many teachers have very creative ideas that they want to do and try and work on as a result of what they've learned from this past spring's experience. So we're still in the process of developing some of those models to help support teachers, but we felt that it made the most sense and it was in response to what we heard our community asking for as a result of their experience from last spring.
Thank you.
I've got a couple of questions, but before I do, there is a hand up in the public where this is, we had public comment initially. If you've got questions, if you could please email those to theboard@boe@scarbrowschools.org. We'll make sure that those get addressed or forwarded to the proper place to be answered. So I've got a couple of different ones. You had touched a bit, Monique, about making sure that students had adequate Wi-Fi. What would happen if a home did not have adequate support currently for multiple students to be synchronous learning, where you're going to try to keep families on the same schedule and their parents working at the same time? You know, again, not to tell too many stories, but I had to ban somebody from gaming tonight to ensure that I stayed on the Wi-Fi. How are we going to support that and not negatively impact the student as we uncover these issues?
Absolutely. I'm gonna rely on my colleague, Dawn, to respond to that because he's been, he and his team have been putting quite a bit of time into problem solving that and securing supports for our families.
So specifically to that question, because we anticipated it last spring, we acquired, started the process of acquiring hotspots for families. And for a small number of families that came to us, we issued them out as well as some staff. And what we planned on doing is continuing that practice and expanding it on an as-needed basis. Specifically, what that is, is a, it's a Verizon hotspot, like you would get if you went into the Verizon store. And rather than tethering it to a phone or anything else, this little hotspot can sit in a window or whatever, and you connect your school-issued device to it. And that's how you get your bandwidth connection to the internet. It's a cellular Wi-Fi device. We would, we plan on creating a, a quick process by which families could come to us, communicate the, the need that they have. And then we could document that and provide them with, with the appropriate tool.
Great, thank you. And I think my next questions are probably to you as well, Dawn. With respect to like video monitor training, teaching students how to make sure that they're looking away and not staring at the screen consistently, will we be offering some of that education to families and students, especially 612, where they're expected to be on their computers pretty consistently throughout the day?
Well, I'll start with referencing back to a comment that Monique made in, in her previous presentation that we are gonna work with teachers to, to try to emphasize the synchronous and asynchronous portions of the teaching and learning that, that we believe, we got a lot of good feedback from parents and teachers and on our START committee. We need to focus on more synchronous opportunity, but that doesn't mean that we need to have people streaming back and forth for six, eight hours a day. And certainly, we can provide some tips and guides to families on things like just basic posture, ideas that they might employ in their house to, for students to be comfortable while they're working. Just basic things like try not to do it in the middle of the living room with everyone zipping back and forth and the TVs on and everything else. Doesn't mean that the, that our students may necessarily follow through with that, but definitely we can provide some, some tips for them and, and hopefully they'll be helpful for them.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, and I have one more question. And that had to do, we've talked, you mentioned, Chris, about the IEPs. What are we going to do to support the 504 plans? If there is, you know, maybe somebody has preferential seating or they have redirections with their teacher in a quiet one-on-one basis, they're probably not gonna be able to go up and ask those quiet questions in the midst of a class any longer.
Yeah, great question, Leanne. And I think the answer to that is gonna depend on the individual needs of each student. And those decisions would be made typically at a, at a Section 504 meeting where the parents would have an opportunity to participate. We'd have an administrator and teachers at the table as well. You know, I would guess that there will be some pretty common adjustments we might need to make for things like that. So we may need to do, we may be able to do some of those without having a formal meeting with everybody at the table if all the parties agree to make a change to a 504 plan. And that can happen pretty quickly. So that's, I think, how we would address those issues.
Great, thank you very much. Hillary?
Um, so I have a question just based on what Diane was saying about the possibility of K-5 students returning before other students because of the science of younger children. I mean, there, there is some indication that younger children are carriers as much as we thought they might be. But those schools are full of adults. So I guess I have some concerns about all of those adults, especially Wentworth, which is such a much larger school. That's certainly more than 50 adults.
Again, we wouldn't be making those recommendations unless the DOE or the CDC was letting us know that it was safe for us to do that.
Okay, so, but, but I guess my question is, if it's safe for K-5 to do that, why isn't it safe for 612 since, just because of the increased population? Because I just am concerned that, I, I mean, obviously, student safety is of the utmost priority, but, you know, there's a lot of adults that work in our district and, you know, I think we, that their safety is also a top priority. And then I have another question. Is it possible that, I think this kind of relates to maybe, I forget, somebody was saying it, but if there is a case in, I think Sarah, if there's a case in a specific school or classroom, is it possible that one school could be remote learning and while other schools in the district could still be at yellow?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Thanks, Hope. Kristin?
Yeah, I had a question about the length of the school day. I'm assuming that those three hours on the Wednesday, that satisfies a full day, a school day for students, correct? Yep. And then I, and I don't know if this will come up farther down the road. I do have some concerns about the length of the day for the K-5 students, just given the new requirements that they're gonna have to follow, the mask-wearing, revised recess, whatever that may look like. I just wonder if they have the stamina to do that for a full day? And if there's any flexibility there to maybe shorten that up some? That's just more of a thought, I guess it's not so much a question.
I can, you know, as the principals have begun working on what that day might look like, they are very careful in their planning to ensure that students are comfortable and are doing what they are developmentally equipped to do and not, nothing more. For example, in terms of wearing masks all day, and you'll hear more about this a little later, is that there are required mask breaks. And there's, there's all sorts of things that are going to be put in place so that students are as comfortable as possible, so that the learning can occur at a developmentally appropriate level. And I would ask one of my colleagues at K-2, if you'd like to speak some more or elaborate on that. I would just add that in terms of the length of the school day, we are bound by minimum instructional day requirements. And should that shift for different populations of students, we would certainly consider that.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Hill, your hand is up. Did you have another question or? Okay. All right, I think we're ready for the next section.
Okay, so the next section is mine. And I was one of the members of the Health Committee, along with Ann Lovejoy, some of our staff, our nurses, a couple of grade high school students and some parents as well. And these are just a couple of the key findings that we have from our committee. Obviously, there's a lot more detail and a lot more work that was done, but this is just a quick overview. So first and foremost, number one bullet is following any and all CDC and Department of Education recommendations for safety. We talked about that a little bit tonight. One thing I would add to that, we just talked a minute ago about mask use being required throughout the school day, as Monique mentioned a minute ago. Part of that guidance also calls for students to have mask breaks during the day. And the guidance around that is that students should be at least six feet apart and either outside or preferably outside, but if we can't do that, they would need to be inside a room with the windows open. So certainly mask breaks would be a part of, of those CDC and Department of Ed recommendations. For a hybrid model like we're talking about tonight, our recommendation was to have Wednesday be a day in the middle where we can do a deep clean. We talked a lot in our committee about the importance of regular, ongoing communication with students and the community and families around mask-wearing, how to do that properly, and hygiene, physical and hygiene, physical distancing, screening questions. And we talked about that as something we'll want to be doing leading up to the opening of school, but also ongoing after we open the school, to make sure that we're maintaining fidelity with those practices. We really need some clear guidelines that describe when students and staff would be sent home if they're showing signs of illness at school. And then, let's see, my window is blocking the second column here. There we go. We talked also about students. Our high school students came up with this idea, which I thought was great. Students produce some communications to share with other students around the expectations of safety protocols. Talked a lot about the limited movement of groups through the building. And we also talked about for staff, making sure that we have common areas as well as for students, that we're monitoring and making sure we're not having too many people in those areas. And also thinking about creative ways to make sure that staff can stay connected with other staff while we're in this model. And then finally, another issue that we talked about are some curriculum issues. So there's recommendations out there around band or some music, possibly some PE activities that we would need to modify to be able to do those safely. And that's, yeah, just a quick overview of the work that we did.
All right, I'm going to jump in on the band one right away. And I mean this, I'm going to ask nicely. If it is not going to be offered, will parents know this ahead of time so that, you know, again, personally speaking, it's his last year. He could take something, a different elective outside of band if there isn't going to be instruction. When will we know for sure?
Great question, and I might defer to maybe Sue on that in terms of looking at, or Kathy at the middle school, in terms of looking at what the schedule looks like. But the issue driving that being was just about how the virus is transmitted. And there's been a lot of studies out there about quarrel groups, for example, starting a spread. And obviously, with a wind instrument, a concern with that as well. So I think the challenge here will be to find ways to still have kids be able to participate in those activities. But what that will look like, we'll have to, we'll have to do some work around that. And one of our high school students, I think, was a chorus member as well, and shared some thoughts about that as well. But in terms of the timeline, I'm not, I'm not totally clear on that.
I can, I can tell you, Leanne, that I have a meeting scheduled with Mrs. Richardson, the department head for music, next Friday. And we'll probably begin to peel that onion on Friday.
Okay, thank you.
Guidance council, let me just say that guidance counselors will be in a little bit early. They have 10 extra days in the summer. They use three in June and will be back seven days. And I know that their primary focus will be updating schedules and taking care, reaching out to kids and taking care of that, starting probably about August 17. So there would be time to make updates on schedules if they needed to.
And then, Leanne, we are planning on continuing band at the middle school. I've been in conversations with Ms. Shbo, the band teacher. And she can just even do keying with the students when they are in class, where they're actually not playing the instrument, but working on their keystrokes. Then on their remote time at home, they can play and practice. And when we were in remote learning, they would play pieces and then submit the music to her.
Okay, thank you very much, Kathy. Chris, I have another question that, please don't laugh at this. All of the things that we saw in the plan talked about with lunches, how they were going to order lunches and how they would be wrapped. Can students bring their lunches from home or are we expecting that everything is going to be on-site?
I'm not going to laugh at that question because I hadn't even thought of that myself. That's a great question, and I'm not sure what the answer to that is, Leanne. That's not something, I don't think that came up in our group that I can remember. And it wasn't one of our recommendations. The recommendations were more around the spacing while students are eating.
Like Ann wants to weigh in.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to say it wasn't about lunch food coming into the building. It was about the aerosolization, I believe is the word, of while you're eating. So it's about where you're eating lunch and how far apart you're distanced while eating lunch, not where your lunch is coming from. We won't be having salad bars and things where kids are going to be breathing on food or, you know, having a lot of contact with the food. Lunches will be sort of prepackaged and bag lunch kind of thing or wrapped up on a tray so that it's sanitary and delivered to kids if they're eating in their rooms or easy to, to sort of hand out and serve to kids if they're spaced in a, in a larger, in a larger room, but adequately spaced out in a cafeteria. Does that make sense?
Sort of. I'm getting the, how we will handle what's on campus. It really is coming down to, because if I can't bring my grocery bags to the grocery store, can we bring a lunchbox from home?
I think bringing a lunchbox is fine because you're going to, your child will keep it self-contained in their backpack or with their things, and they're going to be the only ones touching it and that kind of thing. So it's, I think, when we look at the elementary K-5 level, kids will be keeping their, their items close by them all day long in their home rooms and not needing to go to lockers and things like that. So yeah, bringing your lunchbox from home will be fine.
Thank you.
Contained in your little personal bubble in your classroom.
And we can have our Food Services Director check in because again, at the state level, they're having many, many meetings specific to nutrition.
Great. Hillary?
So I have, I was just wondering if there was any discussion regarding specialist teachers who may have contact with like many times more students than a classroom teacher or an ed tech that's assigned to a specific classroom?
I can start that out and then turn it over to the principals for some specific examples. While we want our students to have all of the specials that they usually get, we're looking at how we might deliver those differently and where the teacher might move to the classroom. But also, we're also looking at why, at the possibility of having some specials take place during certain semesters or during certain trimesters. So we're looking at that a little bit differently. And when they are not delivering instruction to the students they are assigned during that trimester, they may be helping out with some other, with some classroom teachers. Their building principals would like to share some initial ideas. This is still in the process of discussion while they're trying to work on developing their school schedules that'll work.
I can jump in. So Hillary, on some days, students in, in the middle school were on a four-day rotation. They might have digital literacy, world language, and digital citizenship. And so what we do, instead of having those on a rotating four-day schedule, they would have one per quarter. So one of the things we found in remote learning that it was difficult for students to navigate all of the courses in their Google Classroom remotely. So if we can reduce the number of encore classes that they have at any one time, we're reducing the amount of teachers that they see and the amount of students that each teacher has. So we've been working on changing our schedule.
Okay. I also, sorry, did Ann want to say something?
I was just going to offer that the K-5 leadership has talked about having a similar rotation of maybe having one special per trimester instead of all four specials that we have or six specials at Wentworth. We have four at K-2. And so we're still working on that, but trying to reduce the community spread, trying to reduce the number of people the specialist teachers come in contact with and trying to simplify the schedule as much as possible. So that's one thing we're looking at, but nothing's been decided yet.
Okay, thank you.
My other question is, you got, so I keep hearing three to six feet. Like, I thought it was six, I guess, where does that discrepancy come in? And like, is it three feet or is it six feet?
So if you look at the guidance that was released from the state a week ago Friday, if you go on the state DOE website, it is very explicitly stated that students must be three to six feet apart.
Or not so explicitly stated.
I think my understanding was their preference is six feet, and that is still the standard that we should go by.
I guess that's my, that was kind of my question. And then lastly, Chris, you had talked about screenings, or maybe Diane had said it at the beginning. Is that a screening that will happen at school? Like, will the temperatures be taken as, as children come into the building and adults? Or what does that look like?
Yeah, so we talked about that quite a bit in our committee. And that screening, the plan for now would be for that screening to be done at home, both staff and families doing that with their students. And part of what we talked about is just the immense difficulty of screening that many students coming in every day and being able to monitor and keep track of that. So we really felt like it was more practical, I think, to do outreach and education with families about the importance of the self-screening tools, to potentially provide some support to families who may need access to things like thermometers, but to have families and staff do that at home before coming into school. So for example, Hillary, another example would be if we were going to do the self-checks ourselves as a school, we would almost have to think about doing those before a student got on the bus, right? So now we're talking about our bus driver is going to be taking kids' temperature before they get on the bus. So just a whole host of issues with, with us trying to do that, that in the end, our committee felt like it was better to have families do that at home.
And Chris, that was really with the way in of, you had a lot of medical professionals on your committee, correct?
We did. We were fortunate to have, I think, one meeting, I think we had five different doctors in there with us. And that was an area that we had consensus on. There really wasn't much, you know, no disagreement about that piece. They were comfortable with that approach.
Quick question. What happens if a student is unable to keep a mask on? What options do we have?
Well, we have a lot of options, but you know, we, that's the whole point of providing the physical distancing as well as the face coverings. And one thing that we learned in our committee from our health experts was that depending on the age group, that the younger kids are far less efficient at transmitting the virus because they just don't have the same power to cough or spread aerosol droplets as far as an adult or a larger child does. So it just depends, the younger kids, we are going to take mask breaks. We are going to be, you know, getting outside as much as possible and those kinds of things. But we'll just have to deal with that as it comes. I mean, I was talking to a preschool teacher just today who said that she's doing three-to-five-year-olds and they're keeping their masks on as much as possible. And you just have to sometimes build tolerance to that.
The other piece is, you know, obviously, if there are medical reasons why any person might not be able to wear a mask, whether that be a student or an adult, there is the leeway for those folks to wear face shields. The department has given that as an accommodation.
Thank you, Diane. Kristen?
I had a quick question about, one of the recommendations was about N95 masks and PPE for the nurses. And I'm wondering, in your, I didn't say protection for teachers to be in close contact with students. In, in some cases, they just have to be, and will they also get the?
Sorry, I didn't, I didn't quite catch all of the, I'm not sure if it's my connection or Kristen's.
It's probably mine. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
I'm wondering if you, where you guys discussed the N95 masks and the PPE for the nurses, if you also discussed providing those for teachers who work in close contact with students?
Oh, sure. Great question. So the recommendation for staff who are not nurses was more around providing both a surgical mask, which are kind of those, you know, those paper masks that you've probably seen around the blue paper, in combination with a face shield as opposed to using an N95 mask. And the two factors that we discussed around that were first that you actually need to have a fitting done for an N95 mask, and it's a, this was news to me, something I learned in our committee. It's a pretty involved, fairly involved process to have that done properly. And then the second piece, obviously, is just the availability of those masks. I think it's still potentially challenging. So the recommendation, for example, for some of our special education staff that might be working closely with students who need personal care, help with toileting would be to use, you know, gloves, a mask, and then a face shield to protect the eyes as well and potentially a gown, so.
Sarah?
Thanks, Ann. So you guys talked a lot about the options for remote learning for students. I'm curious if the same consideration has been made for teachers who are maybe high-risk or are uncomfortable going back full-time if they have also given the option to be remote.
I'm happy to answer that. So we have surveyed all of our staff because again, absolutely, we want to make accommodations for those folks who are in a high-risk group themselves, who have a family member that is in a high-risk group. Or there's also a piece around, around family care in terms of the care for children. And so our HR department put that survey out to all of our staff. They're looping back to individuals now, and those determinations will be made on a case-by-case basis with employees in regards to what, what type of leave they might qualify for or if they are able to work remotely, how we might match them up with students who are working remotely. And so our HR department is working very steadily with employees on this piece.
Okay, thanks, Ann.
Alicia?
Thanks. My question's similar to yours about the mask-wearing, but a little bit different. I'm wondering if we're going to, if you're going to modify the student handbooks where for disciplinary purposes and for expectations regarding social distancing and mask-wearing. Because from my perspective, there's a component of, some students may be unable to follow the rules and some students may be unwilling to follow the rules. And when it's a matter of unwilling, that, that to me is akin to, you know, potentially harmful behavior to other students. And so at that point, I do think that we need to consider it a potential disciplinary action. And at that point, I think we would probably need to modify the handbook. And I'm wondering if that's been discussed.
I don't think it has been discussed. I think that's a great question. And I would, I think the administrators would treat that like any other situation. If somebody is not following directives from any staff member, first we'd talk to them and try to get them to understand what the directive is. And if they continue to not follow the directive, then I think that's when, you know, one of the administrators can intervene with the staff member and the student and process what's going on. So I think, again, I hope that that would not be an issue. And, but I think we would treat it like any other way. And, uh, but I think we would, we would treat it like any other way. And to be honest with you, in the handbook, there's probably something that may cover that already, not following, following a directive from, uh, the classroom teacher administration. Now, there are students, more complex special ed students, that you would have to modify that. And you would probably not discipline the student necessarily because they might have some reason why they're doing that. Tactile defensive, whatever, whatever it is. And so again, in those situations, you know, common sense approach to try to find an alternative way to educate the student to comply.
Just worry about, um, taking sort of the special ed component out. I worry about not having the expectations set for even the teachers to know, you know, what, what am I expected to do in, in this situation? And, and, uh, you know, I'm sure that people are gonna wanna feel comfortable that this is some, you know, we have the hands-off policy, whatever, and, and, um, that this is the way it's going to be handled if my child subjected to that type of offensive contact.
Again, the, the purpose of the calendar change that you'll be talking about later tonight, those three days would be staff days to really prepare for the opening of school. And, and those conversations could happen at the school level. I'm sure the building principals could talk to staff about that. And we'll go from there.
Anne?
Uh, yes, thank you. I, I just want to say too that this is an area where the high school students who are on our committee were, had some great ideas. And they really thought that some student-produced videos and messages, sort of public service announcement-type things, could go a long way in helping students all understand that we're all here to protect each other and these are the things we're doing. And especially with sports teams and clubs and things, if you wanna keep these things going and you don't wanna get the whole team sequestered, quarantined, you know, then we all need to wear our masks and, and do our part. And so they had some great ideas on how to help encourage that. And I know that doesn't answer your question exactly, but, um, you know, I know that other school districts are looking at students signing pledges to agree to follow the rules while they're in school. Sort of like pledges to how to behave on the bus and pledges, class pledges on how to behave in class. Um, so I think there's a lot of different ways we can address it and we haven't quite gotten to the level of detail yet about what we're gonna do if kids don't. But it, it is a really valid question and a good one, but, um, we have thought a lot about how to help encourage it and the positive side of it already. And hopefully that, those things will be happening and being um, produced and, and put out to students before school starts or right at the beginning of school so that we have as much buy-in as possible.
Those are great ideas. I love the, students always come up with the best ideas.
Right.
Okay. Um, I do wanna kind of go back to, um, a public comment that came in again late. This came from Jenny Jubless, um, a local pediatric infectious disease physician who also has a daughter at Wentworth. And she's been working at the state level on the Committee for Recommendations. I'm worried, listening to the green level, it sounds as if the school system is thinking that green will be no social distancing or masking. And that is not the case. It is important to understand that three to six feet ed masks are in place through all levels. And if we cannot do that, that we will not be in green.
And again, you know, I apologize if that was how the, uh, explanation was taken. That wasn't my intention. Um, I think when I went back, cause I saw her comment come in, um, I went back and looked at how green is written. It said that we would be following, um, those CDC and state guidelines. And so again, the only shift we would be making, um, would be if, uh, the state shifted that guidance for us. So I apologize.
No, um, it really was more to make sure everyone at home had heard this and understood it as well.
Agreed.
Does, is there, can we ever be green then? Cause there's, we don't have enough physical space for all our students and teachers to be three to six feet apart. Um, is that correct?
I'm not, you know, again, I think it's gonna depend on, um, how guidance may change.
So, right, so I guess we can't be green if the guidance stays the way it is now. The guidance would have to change for us to be able to be in, in.
Well, I think we could, the state could say that we're green, but we might not be able to go green if we can't fit the requirements. Do you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, that's what I mean.
So if our, if our metric was that low, but we couldn't physically meet those requirements, we might need to stay in yellow. Yes.
That's exactly what I meant. Okay, thanks.
Sarah?
Thanks. Um, I guess just go back to my previous question that I had around what happens if a student in a class gets sick. I don't know that that was covered in the health section, um, unless I missed it. Maybe you guys can cover us. Chris or somebody can cover that off again.
Yeah, um, we didn't include that bullet specifically because that, um, what we'd be doing in that instance is, uh, Sarah is following the CDC recommendations. So, uh, the guidance around that will come directly from the state. And, um, if we have a, a, a positive test, they'll, they'll do, you know, there'll be contact tracing, um, for that particular student. And then the guidelines around self-isolation, that would all be following the CDC recommendations, um, around that, around that piece. So I'm not sure if that answers the question or.
Yeah, I guess I'm just thinking and, and maybe the answer is we have to wait to see what the CDC says, but, um, you know, if the idea is to keep kids in pods, then I think the, the concept is if, if one gets sick, then you only have to sort of eliminate, remove that pod and not the whole school. Is that accurate?
Correct. So, um.
I'm seeing a lot of that, okay.
Yeah. And I, I'm not a doctor. I just associated with doctors on the committee. But, um, one thing that I heard was um, when they're looking for, uh, to try to identify with the contact tracing, right, like which students or which staff may need to be out of school and self-isolate. Um, they're looking at metrics like being within a six-foot radius of the student who tested positive for, I think it's a period of at least 15 minutes. So, um, that is kind of the guideline they would look to. So, yeah, it doesn't necessarily mean that even a whole pod or a whole class would necessarily be out. It would just be those students that the CDC identified using those guidelines. Um, and then the other piece of that is there's also guidelines from the CDC around what we would need to do to clean the facility. So, you know, either a classroom or a bus, um, those types of things. But that's not something that we have local control over. We would be following the, the state recommendations for that.
Thanks. Alicia?
I'm just seeing comments coming in about people concerned about the lack of ability to prepare um, for daycare and, and work schedules. And I know, I hate to say it because I know how hard people have been working to get this information out and to come up with a plan. I'm just wondering if there is a way to, um, try to get them that information um, quicker, if, if there's any ability to do that. I mean, it's, it's like we, we wanna pull them and get and, um, get their input, which will take time. Um, and so that's a, that's a great thing and something I value. But on the other hand, I'm, I'm hearing the stress associated with the delay. I'm just wondering, um, if there's a way to speed it up at all.
I would say that, you know, we share that same concern. It, it's hard work and Diane and I speak to the superintendents once a week and all the superintendents are feeling the, the stress and, and the struggles of trying to get a plan and get everything organized and get our schools prepared, get staff prepared. And we wish we could have it all perfectly done. And, and I, I don't think anybody expects that. We, but I want people to know, we understand your frustration. We hear you. We're working really long hours to try to get this together. Um, and, and I just appreciate the candidness and openness about your frustration. And we are listening and we will do our best. And we will do what's right for the students as well.
All right. I think that's it on the health section. Probably ready to move into the next group?
Yes, that would be the academic subgroup. I had the pleasure of working with Kathy Tarrell and Holly Graffon as co-facilitators. Holly was working with us as an intern capacity. Uh, and we worked some, with some amazing, um, folks from our community, parents, students, teachers. Uh, and it was quite a large group. There were 28 members of our committee. Uh, we began by taking a look at those main DOE guidelines. And they worked in small groups, breakout groups, to merge those DOE guidelines with the yellow, green, and red scenarios. We then broke into phase-level groupings so that recommendations could be made with the students' needs, developmental needs in mind um, from that point moving forward. We also took a look at the June Panorama Survey data, the community, the staff, and the student data. We also took a look at the July data as well. To make these recommendations, I'm gonna go over them. They are in far more detail within the plan. Uh, all of this information is, or all of our work, our agendas and notes are all posted on the Start Team website, including all of the data. And we are adding more of the documents, um, as the, as, um, as the background documents as time allows. So very quickly as an overview, this is a DOE requirement. We are going to be required to take daily attendance. We had great flexibility last spring, um, but the expectation is that students will be engaged in instruction in school, whether that be remote, remote or onsite, um, daily. So for those schools who take period attendance, we will be taking a period attendance. Uh, we want to hold high expectations. That was very clear in the recommendations, but also to offer what we call scaffolded opportunities. We wanna provide students with supports to ensure that they can reach and exceed our grade-level goals. That came through in both data and our, and our, and the main guidelines. We also wanna be equitable with those students who are in school and those students will be accessing their learning remotely. Uh, that means we're talking about, all right, if our students need manipulatives in order to do their math, we wanna send home some manipulative kits. Uh, so we're talking a lot about what are the supplies and materials that students at home will need from school. We also wanna make sure that we're balancing, again, that online and offline learning activities. It's about effective teaching and learning. And so our teachers are fantastic. They, um, apply their creative talents and their perseverance to do best for students. And we're gonna continue, we're gonna build off that and continue, um, supporting them as they move forward, um, in the fall. We also do wanna provide family and student training opportunities, both synchronously and asynchronously. So for example, um, what was discussed earlier by Dawn is yes, we want to work with students in the first few days of school, not only in healthy habits, but also in how to use their technology and how to do that i- in a healthy way. So there'll be a range of opportunities for students, but also we wanna help support our parents as well. So there will be, uh, periodic, um, workshops. We refer to them sometimes as parent universities. I'm gonna turn it over to Kathy, who's going to talk a little bit about, um, our recommendations. We were looking for that consistency, clarity, simplicity, and also equity. You'll see those themes throughout. Um, and we really worked hard at developing recommendations that could apply across all models because we will have students both onsite and remote. Kathy?
So we've, we've talked about types of instruction and that we want both synchronous and asynchronous methods. Our, um, data from community, students, and staff all showed that, um, people want an increase in the synchronous time with teachers. Even students said, I wish we had more Google meets. I wish I had more time to have that live interaction with, um, my teachers. And also a balance between the online and the offline learning activities. And in this equity standpoint, um, families that choose the remote learning environment, the students will have the same opportunities and the same learning that occurs in the, um, in-person, um, learning. And to the extent possible, create integrative, project-based learning activities through articulated themes, topics, and standards. That is a main DOE recommendation. That's also going, teachers will need time to plan, um, those inter, integrated, um, opportunities. In grading, assessment, and reporting, we heard clearly that, um, families want the grades. They want the grading to be like it was before, um, COVID. So we're planning to go back to the grading we used before. Um, consider modifications to practices to provide equity across all three learning models. That might be considering more project-based assessments, giving student choice on assessments. So we could go to the next slide. Organizing students. So the daily schedule to include social, emotional, and as well as academic learning. Talked about starting with morning meetings, whether you're in-person or remote learning in the morning. Um, consistent schedule across all three learning models. If we do need to move from in-person to remote, students would have that same schedule. The students that, um, are, a student will go to school in-person and have a schedule on the day, uh, you know, Monday, Tuesday. Then on Thursday, Friday, they'd have the same schedule while at home um, for remote learning. And then organizing students into cohorts that remain together for the majority of the day. So that the, um, we may need to go back to the schedule that we already have and the placement of students and have them make sure that they're staying together for the day when we can. I think, you know, at the high school level, there, students do have a lot of different courses where they're, you know, they can't stay together as well as we can in K8. Um, organizing of staff, that the students stay in place as much as possible while the teachers move to room to room, um, as much as possible. And then with the staff, you know, they're in a, they're in cohorts of teams so that for their planning, instruction, and assessment, they're working in smaller groups. With response to intervention and student support systems, that we're making sure that there are supports for all students, students in-person and students in remote learning. And that school teams will review student progress data and then address possible needs of students, whether they're in remote or in school. Continuing our intervention meetings to meet the needs of all students.
Thank you. Uh, just to summarize the work, um, these were the themes, but what came up across all the phase levels uh, was the need for professional development and planning time. And as you noted in those Wednesday afternoons, those were, um, built to provide some of that time. Uh, but as we consider, as you consider the school calendar, um, this list is just a starting list. Um, we scoured, um, the, um, recommendations and kind of clumped these. Um, but, um, just to orient staff to what the new procedures, how to operate in buildings, um, will take some time. Uh, we are looking at consistent technology tools and platforms. We'll be using Seesaw K5 and Google Classroom 612. And we're working on some shifts within those applications. Dawn will talk a little bit about that in just a minute. But it's really about the effective instructional practices. Um, it really is, we're not talking about, um, and you'll see some images, which when I first, um, saw those images, I thought, whoa, that's not quality teaching and learning. But we will be moving from those. But, you know, you see these diagrams with seats in rows and students. You get, you might get the image that we're gonna have our students sit. You get, you might get the image that we're going to have our students sitting there all day masked and just listening to information that's being delivered. That's not what we're talking about at all. There were some very creative, engaging activities when we were experiencing our distance learning this past spring. And we want to continue with those effective teaching and learning practices and seeking feedback along the way from our parents and in particular, our students. So there's also a need for curriculum and instruction unit lesson planning. Kathy mentioned project-based, our integrated theme-based. The state is working on developing some units and some lessons as well. You've also probably heard about outdoor education, and we're exploring all of those options. What we need to do is we need to bring teachers together before school starts to identify what is the, what are the essential learning goals for our students? It's not going to look like 177 student days moving forward in terms of instruction. And so we need to figure out what our curriculum goals are this year and provide those themes and those integration points. We also have a need to talk about assessment. How do we make it fair between remote and in-class? Grading and reporting practices, we want to make sure that those students who are learning in a remote environment have some choices. We also want to make sure that, you know, if students fall ill, we want to extend the time and the recovery time, particularly if there is learning loss there, and provide those supports. So it would be great to have the entire month of September off to plan. We know that is not practical. We know that we also want to, we're torn because we want to have those students as soon as we can, but we also want to do a quality job of teaching and learning with those students. So the recommendation on the part of the Start Committee would be to delay the student start for one week, which is really just September 1st, 2nd, and 3rd. And I believe Diane will talk a little bit about that when we get to the calendar portion. Andy will talk a little bit about that when we get to the calendar portion. I'm going to turn it over to Dawn.
So in conjunction with the academic discussions with the Start Team and with the leadership teams within the district, we've put a lot of work into what kind of technology supports need to be in place for teachers and students. And by extension, the families who are supporting our students. We want to be able to equip our teachers with more flexibility with video and audio technology so that they're not having to park right in front of their laptop like this and not being able to utilize projector and whiteboard and other resources in the classroom without having to carry their laptop around. We want to make sure that we front-load professional development for all of our professional staff. Monique just mentioned that that's something that we want to try to utilize some extra time for before we actually even start school. We would like to look at making sure that we've provided school-issued devices and an orientation for all students, K12. My staff has been investing basically every working minute this summer, making sure that's ready to go. And at this point, we have devices ready to go in all grade levels at all schools. We're putting the finishing touches on the high school and at Wentworth. But right now, what we have is, for example, in K2, we've actually already gotten to the point where we're labeling the devices by student name. And we're putting little login cards right there with the laptops so the students can log right into the portal for all of their learning applications. So I mean, we're really trying to put some effort into that. We want to make sure that we're in a good position, like the question that was asked earlier, to support connectivity for those who need internet access or need it to be boosted. We're very sensitive to the fact that not only do we have families who are, who have needs in a more traditional sense, but that we also have a lot of upheaval going on within families across the community. And that jobs have changed. And so, and people are making some important decisions, difficult decisions. And so finances are a rough spot right now. So we want to be in a good position to be able to support our families however we can. We've been putting a lot of effort into optimizing how our staff can use Google Classroom in grade 6 through 12, as well as Seesaw, which we had done a fairly large pilot with in K2 and now, and several classrooms at Wentworth. So we're expanding that to K5. We want to make sure that that is as friendly and easy to use for students and families. And our expansion on that is going really well at this point. We're going to need some time working with our teachers and staff to make sure that we have good materials that can communicate what are those core education software platforms? What are the applications? What are the tools that are available for teaching and learning? And then what is that kind of tech coaching, tech training model that we can put in place, whether it's onsite, online, or both? So that students, parents, and staff have ongoing training and coaching going on. It's not just about the technology itself, the little widget that we're putting, handing someone. But how can we build those skills to kind of scaffold people up where they feel comfortable using it as part of the bigger picture, teaching and learning?
Of course I have questions.
Never thought that.
I know, I know. We're going to go with the harder ones first. When we're looking at the calendars and students being, you know, two days in, two days out, we have a lot of Monday holidays. Is there a thought of making sure that we're having equity between the students who are Monday, Tuesday home versus the Thursday, Friday at-home students?
That's certainly something that we can look at, yeah.
Okay. And with that would go snow days. Are we now expecting that there will not be snow days because students are going to be remote two days a week?
Well, that's a good question, Leanne. I have to think about that, but if we have students in school, some students in school, and the roads are bad, we're going to have to cancel school. Now, if everybody's remote, I suppose we could talk more about having that be classified as a school day. But I think the board would have to vote on that, or at least discuss that.
Okay.
That's my initial thoughts.
I just thought I'd put it out there. And this one might be a little bit more of a softball, but it's going to sue. And specifically, senior privileges. Right now, in order for a senior to have senior privileges, they need to take six credits. Have we thought about maybe relaxing those rules a little bit in order to maybe lighten the load in some classes so that more people can be on campus?
We, when we changed the school board policy that allowed seniors to have five classes if they were targeted and all set to graduate on time, we changed the senior privilege policy. So seniors would be able to have senior privileges as long as they pass. To start the year would be if they passed all their classes for fourth quarter or semester two. And for the full privileges, they'd have to have an average of 85 or better. For the late start, early release, it is an average of 75. Since we had the passing or insufficient evidence this past spring, I think everyone would start off, to be fair, getting the full privileges. If students didn't meet that requirement, we always have a mid-quarter check-in where if they've pulled their grades up and had a better start to the year, they could then qualify partway through the quarter to get them for the rest of the quarter. And we recheck that at every quarter's end to set them up for the next quarter.
Excellent. Thank you. Kristin?
Yeah, I think this question is more specific to K5. But do we know yet that for the families that choose to be entirely remote, who's going to be teaching them yet? And will they have any sort of like classroom structure? Will they be grouped? Like if we, I guess if we're asking parents to choose that option basically next week, I'm wondering if we know a little bit more about what that's going to look like.
Well, my understanding was that while the survey opens next week, it's going to remain open for some time while some of the finer points are worked out. And Diane will talk at the end, or Sandy will talk at the end about what some of the next steps are. So the choice doesn't necessarily have to be made next week if there's some piece of information that you're waiting on.
Awesome. Thank you.
Sure.
Hillary?
Oh, sorry, Leanne.
Sorry.
Earlier question too about the Monday inequity. I forget which person asked that question. So we looked at the calendar and it's, I think it's only within one day. There are four Monday holidays. But then there's the Thursday, Friday of Thanksgiving, and then the Friday prior to April break. So it's very, very close. Very, you know, and if it turns out based on snow days or things like that, I remember, I think it was last year, that almost every snow day fell on a Wednesday. And we just, on a Friday, and we just were able to adjust kind of on the fly.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Hillary?
Thanks. I just want to clarify. I know we're going to be talking about the calendar later, but has the DOE, again, waived the minimum day requirements for for districts?
So they have not yet made that waiver, although in several recent meetings that I have been part of, there has been discussion that the commissioner or the governor will be waiving that, but not as of yet.
So in order to make a decision about the extending, sorry, delaying the first week of school, if there's no official word on waiving those days, would we then have to extend the end of the school year?
No, we can go into the specifics of that when we move the proposal forward.
Okay.
April?
So Kristin keeps scooping me, but I'm going to piggyback on her question and say that in thinking about the families trying to make a decision between doing a hybrid model and doing the full remote, I'm wondering if there's going to be some kind of publication or something that we're going to put out for the families so that they can see what that plan is going to look like side by side so that they can make a more informed choice. And then the second part of my question is, would it be possible to do some kind of info night or Q and A for the community after tonight, now that some of the details are being discussed? So that when people are filling out their surveys and they're trying to really make these decisions, that they get their questions answered, you know, in a timely way so that we can keep the ball moving forward, I guess.
So I'll jump on that. So we actually have talked about having a couple of things that are really closely related to what you're talking about. One is making sure that we are really sharing as much detail with folks as we can. Putting together an FAQ on our website so that these questions, I'm writing them all down as you're asking them tonight. And I know others are coming in to us via email as well. And so we want to make sure that instead of answering a question 100 times to 100 folks, that we're putting that information as transparently as possible. And then the other thing that we've talked about with building leadership, and again, like you're stealing our slides for later, but that's great thinking, is doing some parent forums as well.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you, Diane.
I have another question. I don't know if this is the time to ask it or if it should wait. But if students are going into all remote learning, so the parents have opted that they're home all the time, can they still participate in clubs and sports?
Yes, in the same way that a homeschool student in a traditional year can participate in activities and athletics. A student in a remote setting could as well.
Excellent. Thank you. Hillary, your hand is up. Did you have another question? Okay. All right. I know that we have other sections to go through, but I'd like to propose a five-minute break. This, I think everyone probably could use just a quick step away before we hop back in. So if we could come back at 8:05 and continue? Great. Thanks, everyone. Great. Thanks, everyone. All right. We've got a quorum of everybody back from the board. Um, so if we've got the folks who are presenting the next section, I say we uh, go ahead and get started.
Hey, can you guys hear me okay? Awesome. Um, so I would um, like to start by publicly thanking uh, the members of our social and emotional learning committee um, for giving up very precious summer hours um, for the work that we did together. Um, we'd like to give a special shout out to Jay and Julia, who were our student members, because not only did they represent the Scarborough student body quite well, um, but SEL is really about understanding and amplifying student voice. Um, so it was perfect to have them as partners um, in this work. So thank you, Jay and Julia, and I wish I could personally thank your parents. They're doing a great job. Um, so to provide a little background information about social and emotional learning, um, this is not new work in our district. Um, the SPS mission statement includes the phrase, "We will ensure every student is empowered to become a resilient lifelong learner." And SEL is foundational to meeting that outcome. We actually have phase level SEL teams. Um, and representatives from each of those teams comprise a larger district-wide K-12 SEL committee. Um, all of these groups meet regularly and have been doing so over the past year and a half to create and implement action plans that best address the SEL needs of our students. Um, in that work, we have been using the CASL framework and CASL is an acronym for Collaborative for Academic, Social, and Emotional Learning. Um, they produce a lot of research um, and support documents um, for social emotional learning for school districts. Um, and we have included a graphic of that framework on our slide um, for reference. So the SEL plan um, that we are presenting today from our START committee um, is aligned to this CASL framework. And our recommendations, um, we believe will help focus our ongoing K-12 work um, so that we can seam seamlessly continue um, as we enter into the fall. Um, finally, um, we, we may be sharing our work today on just one slide for this presentation. Um, but SEL work is very wide and very deep. So we um, strongly encourage those who are interested in this part um, to look through our action plan um, and see all that it has um, in detail. And with that, I will turn it over to Kelly Crosby, who's going to share the committee recommendations.
Thanks, Jess. So can you hear me okay? As Jessica mentioned, um, I'm gonna review some of the key recommendations that go across all three models of learning. So whether we're remote, hybrid, or in fully in-person, these recommendations stand for our return to school um, in whatever capacity. And importantly, it's, it's critical to note that this work is truly for each and every. So we're talking about students, supporting families, and supporting our staff. Um, first and foremost, and I'm, this is a ongoing theme throughout the evening, is a critical need for professional development for all staff in a variety of topics. Um, I'll just mention a few that the committee felt were extremely critical. Um, building relationships and integrating SEL into in-person and distance learning environments um, is the first area of need for professional development. We also need PD in creating equitable learning environments focused on and ensuring anti-bias, anti-racism, cultural proficiency, and inclusive practices. Third, in our um, need for PD is identifying, um, for staff to be able to identify signs of trauma and trauma-informed practices and other mental health concerns. So for example, anxiety, depression in their students. And then finally, um, sadly, PD around supporting grieving students. Um, the second recommendation, key recommendation that we have is to develop a plan for re-entry screening. So we're not talking about health screening per se here, we're talking about SEL screening. And that could come in um, many forms, some of which um, one-to-one interviews, conferencing, and then also ongoing progress monitoring for those SEL needs of our students. And then um, the next key recommendation is identifying or developing programming that addresses SEL needs for all. And as Jessica mentioned, that work has begun. Um, the K-5 SEL committee has been um, meeting regularly for two years and the K-12 committee for one year. Um, so we have a good foothold, but there's certainly, um, you know, needs have shifted and amplified. And so um, this is a great springboard for the work. Um, along with identifying and developing programming is um, the need to create and publicize a differentiated list of SEL resources that staff can access um, for their own wellness and for that of their students. And developing um, strategies, materials, and resources with particular attention, and this has been mentioned a few times tonight, for those students who are transitioning, not only between grades, but particularly between phases. You know, they have had this sense of, you know, really quick closure of their previous school. And then now they're transitioning to a new and unfamiliar um, school in some ways. And I know some work has already been done via virtual step-up days and videos and those pieces, but they're, the committee is recommending really um, giving attention to those. And then um, the final recommendation is um, prioritizing time for SEL. And we are really pleased to see that we are on the same page as the academic um, subcommittee group because um, they mentioned the same thing in their recommendation. So specifically designate this transition period as a focus on social and emotional needs and then designate that time in an ongoing capacity. I'm gonna pass it to um, Nate Terrio, um, Assistant Principal at the high school. And he's gonna talk about other important considerations for SEL.
Thanks, Kelly. Um, so we had uh, several through lines that ran through many of our conversations. Um, and those are reflected in our important considerations. Um, firstly, uh, we want to proactively de-stigmatize conversations and needs around mental health. Um, I think it's clear to everybody that this pandemic has deeply affected people socially and emotionally. Um, and we want to make sure that people feel that um, it's okay for them to bring forth some of the issues that they might be dealing with. Um, secondly, we want to prioritize SEL strategies for students and staff. Um, again, uh, that's another through line. Um, we know that, you know, supporting students is crucially important. And we also know that um, our staff need to be in a position to do that. And so we want to make sure that we support um, both groups um, in terms of their SEL needs. Lastly, um, we also um, noticed in feedback and conversations and discussions, um, it's really critical for us um, to try to think carefully um, about how we, or what's, how many systems we're using. Um, and the group felt pretty strongly that we need to limit um, and centralize some of our communication systems during the pandemic um, so as not to increase stress levels or anxiety among families. We want to make sure that we're communicating well as a team um, to our stakeholder groups. Um, so as Jess and Kelly um, already alluded to, um, this is ongoing work. Um, K-5 has been at this for two years now, um, and a K-12 committee was formed last year. Um, there's also been some discussion of expanding that committee um, to include other stakeholder groups. Um, so if, if people are interested in helping to support that work, um, because this group will be, be engaged in that work throughout the year. Uh, but if there are stakeholders out there who are interested in, in joining this work, uh, joining this group and its administrators, um, staff, uh, and some students right now. Um, but if parents are out there and are interested in supporting the work, um, please reach out and let us know. Um, and we'll get back to you. That's all I got. Questions about that?
Yes. Um, based under this, I know we've taught, in the plan, it says, you know, parents can um, relook at whether their child is a hundred percent remote or working through a hybrid at the end of a quarter. If they find that for whatever reason, for emotional or a social reason, can we make accommodations if it's just not working out for the student to be in one place or the other midterm?
I'm not sure that that's specifically an SEL question and more of a overall structural question. But I mean, I would just go back to our mission, which is ensuring a welcoming and inclusive learning environment for each and every. And so I know that there are logistical pieces to making changes midstream, but um, I think that we've demonstrated time and again that we'll do whatever it takes to make school work for um, for our kiddos. And so, I mean, I guess that's kind of a long way of saying, we're going to make it work for students.
Thank you. And I know we've always done everything possible. This is really just to try to help those folks at home who may be concerned about a decision that they're making. And what decision am I gonna make? And what can I do if it isn't working for me?
And in the, and in the more detailed plan, um, we really emphasize, emphasize the need for um, creating and communicating community partnerships. Um, because students, when they're not physically in the building, lose access to um, supports that they have, you know, when they're in the building. So if somebody is choosing full remote and um, may take advantage of resources and supports in a different way too. So.
And one of the things that I can add on a little bit is uh, in our plan is that we, we really want to emphasize that multi-tiered system of supports for students. So um, at every phase level, we have a process um, to, for student support teams, um, RTI, or response intervention. So um, to, to uh, maybe quickly answer that question, Leanne, it would be that we would go to that team and we would meet with families and we would do everything that we would normally do to make sure that that student got exactly what um, what they could.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay.
Good evening. I'm going to start with the operations group. And uh, would just like to start by thanking Graham Stoner, Mike Legage, Peter Esposito, Todd Jobson, uh, Sarah Redman, who worked a lot behind the scenes and uh, in our groups, as well as the parents, students, staff, and public safety who were involved in all of our meetings. So thank you for everyone that was involved. The uh, large group that we had uh, divided into four breakout groups. And those four great breakout groups will each be reporting tonight. We have uh, transportation, which you can see in the slide, facilities, nutrition, and athletics and co-curricular activities. So we had quite a task uh, to get through so many different questions, so many different uh, plans. And what we've uh, worked on is starting with the uh, survey that went out to parents and guardians at the beginning of July. Uh, a big question that, that first came up is, how would we provide transportation for our students? And in the survey, a question was asked, how many parents, parents and guardians would be able to transport their students to school? We found that seventy-eight percent of the respondents said that they'd be able to transport. And that would be a huge burden taken away from our transportation. As you could see with the numbers, and we'll, we'll go through the seating chart that's in front of you, that uh, there will be another upcoming survey so that we would ask for a commitment for our planning for transportation. So with the yellow and the green, we had again asked for uh, parents, guardians to be able to transport children on a regular schedule. And it's a recommendation that students are transported in smaller groups so that social distancing can be done on the buses. With the social distancing, you could see a diagram that is uh, on the slide. The driver is on the left front and the S's are the students that are socially distanced throughout the bus. Recommendations include face coverings at the bus stops, as well as face coverings on the bus, hand sanitizer upon entering and exiting the bus, seated assignments, and clear disinfection protocols every time our buses are used. For our next slide, we are going to be discussing classroom safety and Graham Stoner will discuss classroom safety.
Thanks, Dave. Um, so I'm gonna go over some of the recommendations to make sure that we are um, really minimizing the risk of exposure to students and staff. And they are as follows. Um, teachers are gonna modify seating at tables so that students will have adequate space. Tables and desks will be wiped down routinely throughout the day, or if new groups of students enter a room. Uh, we are asking students to use proper hand hygiene and wash their hands. Uh, soap and water really preferred, but also we'll have hand sanitizer uh, upon entering and before leaving the classroom. As weather permits, windows may be opened, and we'll get to ventilation in a little bit. And uh, teachers are encouraged to bring students outside for portions of their instruction, uh, certainly when it's appropriate to do so. And I wanted to also go through and share just some examples of classroom setups. I believe on the left is a high school classroom, uh, Wentworth classroom on the right. So I know there was some conversation around the distancing. Uh, current recommendations from the state and CDC are around three to six feet. And obviously, that's gonna have an impact on how many students are able to be in a space. So if you look there at the six foot up in the upper left corner, in a seven hundred and fifty square foot classroom, you're gonna be able to fit thirteen desks. So uh, if you obviously go to a three-foot distance or some variation of that, um, you can certainly fit more desks. Uh, obviously, um, the size of the student um, and phase level is an important consideration here. On the right side with Wentworth, uh, we found in setting up a classroom, um, using the six, six-foot guideline, we could have nine desks. And uh, with a three-foot between, we could do fifteen. And even though you can't really see it there, we're also taking into account um, adequate space of at least. adequate space of at least six to eight feet from the front board out to where the students would be to allow teachers some sort of safe space to do their work in the front of the classroom. And I can speak to the Wentworth pictures there. There's six feet between the rows there as well, as you go back. So the classroom setups, again, here's another one. Again, with the six foot distancing, that ranges from nine to 13 students. Does depend on the building. It also depends on other furniture that's in the classroom, such as laptop carts, tables, shelves for curriculum materials. Three foot distancing does obviously allow us to have more students in there, and again, depends on all of those factors. And the next slide, I think, is going to take us to cafeteria, and I'll hand it back over to Mr. Currier.
With our cafeteria procedures, a little bit was discussed earlier in the presentation about what would happen with food. Some of the recommendations that came out of our subgroup of nutrition. Some of the options would be distancing by eating in the classroom, possibly outdoors. Space six feet apart in the cafeteria due to eating and most likely not have a face covering during that time. Pre-packaging meals when possible, and removing the self-service items that were previously mentioned, as well as food bars. Making meals available for delivery on the days where students are accessing their education remotely. A very important piece that our transportation and nutrition departments have worked together throughout the summer and throughout the distance learning. Making meals for staff, I'm sorry, ongoing staff training using PPE, proper distancing in the workplace, as well as following safety sanitation protocols. There will be, one of the discussions was modifying the daily advanced ordering system. So when students were, whether it's first period, when they check into school late, they'd be able to order their meals that would be sent to the cafeteria of that school, and the meals would be prepared when the orders are received. And then the food service payments could be made either online, or a payment could be sent to the school.
I always get the most riveting topics, so I'll talk to you about ventilation. Our HVAC systems actually are serviced in the summer and around the winter break, so through the December-January timeframe. So about every six months, they're serviced. And they were just recently serviced this summer, and they go through all of the air handlers and anything that actually supplies air to occupied spaces. They're all cleaned, checked for operational efficiency and so forth. I've seen a lot of talk about the need for increased airflow in classrooms, and they're referring specifically to the mechanical increase of airflow where you have air feeding in. And to the extent that we can do that, we will through our building automation systems. We can open the outside air dampers and, and help supply some more fresh air into the classrooms. In all the schools, before any fresh air is pulled in with the air handling systems, it's actually pushed through a filter. So the fresh air is filtered before it hits the occupants. All of our systems are currently operating and providing proper balance of fresh filtered air, and they exhaust the stale air, or return air, we call it, to the outside. The challenge with outside air temperatures in Maine is, as you might imagine, seasonally, this time of year, we don't really want to pull in the 90-degree humid air because it challenges any temperature limits of individuals. But whenever we can, we like to pull in as much outside and fresh air as we can, and we do this through an engineered design of our systems. So when the system senses high CO2, it brings in more fresh air, and when there's low CO2, it reduces that fresh air. And we can override things. So I've heard quite a few people saying, can we open windows? And the answer is, in an air-conditioning, air-conditioned building like Wentworth or the middle school, we would still recommend using that system because opening a window does not give you filtered air. It gives you dirty air from the outside with pollen and other allergens in it. And our filters capture those before it's sent into the rooms. But in un-air-conditioned buildings, we would probably, and we do allow air to come in through the windows as the outside air temperatures permit. But again, you have to be sensitive to the occupants and their allergy sensitivities. So I would try to reduce the number of fans blowing around the room. As the respiratory droplets, which is the source of transmission of this disease, they really are not what we want blowing around the room. So we'd like to just kind of keep natural airflow rather than a forced airflow, if that makes sense. The next, the next slide is around a whole bunch of facilities needs. I'm apologizing for my camera. For some reason, it just died tonight, so that's why my screen is black. And anyway, the facilities need, so we are already underway with retrofitting. The clinics at schools were required to have a sick and a well clinic at each school, or it's highly recommended, at least through the DOE. And so that is to make sure that kids who are exhibiting symptoms are not mixing with those who might just be coming in to maybe take some medicine or, or have some other sort of well check at each clinic. So I'm working, I've worked with the nurses and the building leadership at each school to try and figure out a space where we can make that happen at each school. In some cases, it involves adding a sink or giving access to an additional bathroom or so forth. We're also working with our suppliers, and as you might imagine Plexiglas is in high demand, to create some protective screen barriers in the high transactional counter areas and the main offices and library main desks and things. And we've had a generous offer from a donor to help us fund that work and get it installed. So I'm working with that, that anonymous donor to make those things happen. And in addition, we're trying to get some freestanding ones for student desks at the K-2, or student tables at the K-2 levels as well. We've been working a lot with our custodial crew on enhancing the disinfecting and cleaning. We've purchased additional spraying machines. We call them electromagnetic sprayers, where the disinfectant is electromagnetically charged and sprayed to disinfect surfaces. We have checklists for custodians to make sure they're doing that type of work. And we were talking about creating some training videos for the staff who will probably have a desire to assist with that as needs arise within their classrooms. And an additional thought that came up, and I'm working with our supply chain representative as well, to provide a cleaning kit in each classroom, which would include disinfectant and safety equipment and cleaning cloths and so forth. In addition, we'd like that there be a written log for each room in each building that documents who's accessed the space for the contact tracing, should that become necessary. I also have ordered, and we will probably also make a lot of signs and visual pointers throughout the building to direct folks to maintain socially distant, wash their hands, and for the custodians to remind them about the disinfecting protocols that we have. I'll leave the next three bullets to, I think it's Brem, perhaps?
Yep, thank you, Todd. I want to just quickly go back to the, we won't go back on the slides, but if you remember the pictures we showed a few minutes ago. Again, we'll have to definitely pay close attention to class sizes. As we know, we will have students who will be all remote. We will have students coming in a few days a week, and students who come every day. And so based on the phase level and the recommendations, we will be giving consideration to making sure that the available spaces we have are adequately spaced apart, given the three to six, six-foot recommendations. Building leaders will also continue to conduct regular safety evacuation drills, as we do, and we'll look at all of the, again, building-based protocols that come with that. And then we'll also be communicating and planning with community services because we do obviously have space constraints. We also have space availability for before and after care. And a lot of that will be enrollment-driven, but again, we are continuing to have that conversation, and they were a part of our planning for these recommendations. All right, I'm going to hand it over to Mike Legage for activities and athletics.
Thank you very much. Certainly, it probably sounds like a little bit of a broken record, but we'll certainly be following the Department of Education and CDC and local guidelines as we look at returning to participation for athletics and activities. We also are governed by the Main Principles Association. I'm certainly sure that people have seen the newspaper articles and seen on news about the kind of moving target of a start date for high school athletics. But we are, we do have those governances and, and working closely with those groups. Because we're getting prepared for an August 3 start originally, we have put quite a bit of work into our COVID-19 plan. We actually created a website that's a link to our existing high school site, and that really outlines all of our plans. It's a fluid document. We continue to upgrade, update it as information comes in. But you can see some of those targets that we, we talked about on the webpage in terms of, you know, screenings, how we're going to handle screenings, and how we're going to handle face coverings, and, and all our logistical and event operation strategies are all really outlined on that webpage. We're also really proud of, I guess, too, in terms of that webpage is our FAQ section. As Dr. Nato mentioned, that they're going to do that for this document and questions that come in about the academic side. We've been doing that already for athletics and activities. Those questions have come to us, and we'll continue to update that as well so that we can, you know, provide that information out to everybody. So we're, we're kind of ready to go. We're just, you know, waiting for that, you know, opportunity to start. We are continuing some discussions with, I'm having some discussions with Oak Hill Players Director and the One Act Play Director to begin to talk about those activities and what or if we're able to do, you know, those, those productions, or are we going to, you know, look at some delay to those? So we are beginning to have those individual, smaller groups discussions on the activity side to work through, you know, their, their needs, you know, individually. And I think that's it. Hopefully, you'll go to the webpage to check it out.
Nick?
Yes, I just had a question, actually, it's all the way back to the first slide of this grouping, which is, I think, the bus slide. And I know we've talked about this in board meetings before. We've talked about the number of the ridership of our buses and what we're required by law to have and all of that. And I'm assuming all that's been not waived because we're still going to have the same number of buses. But I guess my question is, is looking at the diagram, there was one S on every other seat, and that looked like a very small number of students on a bus that would normally hold probably three to four times as many students. Do we think we're going to be all set as far as bus volume to handle that?
So I'll jump in a little bit because we did get some information that there is new information that is going to be released tomorrow in regards to buses. Again, this is just a great example of when I, you know, when you've heard me say tonight and other nights that we're constantly in draft form, this is our current thinking, and we have to be willing to flex as new information comes out. So this particular diagram is based on the summer guidance. And so to date, we are, we would be available to transport 13 students per route. I think Dave did a great job explaining that, obviously, if we were taking responsibility for transporting all the students we usually transport, with this model and not more parents stepping up, we probably would not be able to open schools, quite frankly, because we have to be able to physically get kids to school. So we were really excited that there was such a large volume of parents who said that they would be able to make the commitment to help us out by providing transportation. And again, that was just a temperature that we did in July. When we send our next survey out, we're going to be looking for folks to make those commitments for us. And again, how all that lays out is really going to help us determine if we can stay true to, like, that regular school day time, et cetera.
That's perfect. It's a nice drawing, by the way.
I have to say, you have no idea how long it took me to draw that picture.
I asked another quick question for Todd, actually. He thought ventilation wouldn't get a spotlight, but I actually wanted to ask, because I'm thinking of my long-range planning work. I know the primary schools have oil boilers, the middle school has heat pumps, the Wentworth has geothermal, and my question is, is all of them use forced hot air, right? So we have, we have physical air exchange at all six locations, correct?
Yes, that's correct, yep.
Great, that's it.
Hillary?
You're on mute. Sorry. I have a few questions, but I wanted to expand a little bit on Nick's question. I know that this was just preliminary, but if 75%, say, of our parents are willing to transport students, is that a high enough percentage to be able to transport the rest on the buses with that scenario that you, the little picture that you, that you drew?
We believe it is. You know, I've got to say Sarah is literally working through all of that information compared to her current bus run list to see how those numbers would change. And, and we'll do that again. But certainly, if we look at like that number, 13 is about 25% you know, of the students that we would be transport, that we would be able to transport. And so, you know, the number that you've just suggested is like a perfect match for what the current mandate says. If we had 75% transporting themselves and we could do 25, then we would be, you know, good to go. And you also need to consider that if we're in a hybrid model, we're not talking about bringing that same volume in every day, too. So, you know, so again, we certainly don't want to put an undue burden on anyone who is not able to do that. But if there are some folks who can, that would certainly be helpful.
And then I think probably everybody knows this, but I have experienced some frustration at drop-off and pickup with my kids at some of the schools. So I'm just wondering how, what accommodations are going to be made to, to have that, that much of an increase in drop-offs and pickups? Or have you not talked about that?
No, I know none of your frustration has ever been at Wentworth, Hillary.
Never, never.
Well-oiled machine. We have actually had some conversations about that and that it's almost like we need the opposite. Right now, there'll be fewer buses, more car riders. So Wentworth has some options in terms of, like, perhaps looking at the bus loop now becoming the parent drop-off loop and opening up the access road for buses and those pieces. So it's, you know, the plan isn't perfectly created yet because we need the data and the numbers to know exactly what we're looking at. But every school site has its challenges, but it's certainly something that we have begun exploring and problem-solving.
And then just in terms of K-5, the pickup for K-5 has parents coming into the building. I assume that's something we would want to I assume that's something we would want to avoid. And so that probably also has to be looked at.
Correct. So it's like the reverse, right?
Yeah.
And next, to piggyback off of that, it kind of goes back to our scheduling and, you know, looking at some staggered drop-off and arrival.
Okay. And then regarding the diagrams for the classes, do we know, this might be a Diane question, but do we know, like, what number of students would need to be in each class to accommodate having the hybrid model, right? Where like, where like basically half the students are in school at a time? Like, so, because I was just, when I was looking at the pictures, I think Brem had said, you know, here's a picture of what it would look like if it was six feet of distancing and that allowed for nine, I forget, nine desks. And three feet allowed for 15 desks. So do we know like how many, or approximately how many kids we would need to accommodate per class? I mean, I guess we won't know who is doing distance learning, but I just am looking for a close, something close. Or if you know that.
Dawn, actually, if you could forward to the next slide, or I guess it's Kelly, right? Kelly, do you have the slide deck? So, you know, again, if you look at, if we're staying within six feet distancing, the ranges in all of our schools right now are between nine and 13. If we think about the hybrid model and about 50% of our students coming in on A days and 50% coming in on B days, that aligns pretty closely with what our, you know, with what half of our class size is.
Okay. Great. That's what I was asking. And then, sorry, I have one more question. So I'm, and this is probably for Mike. So this is like a two-part question. Can we assume that if we're red, that we're not going to be having, we're not going to be having any after-school sports or activities? Number one. Wait, I'll just, and then number two, number two is, I mean, you know, at the very beginning, we were talking about situations where because of like local numbers, we might be red. Whereas, you know, some of the districts we play might be yellow or green or vice versa. And I assume that that's going to wreak havoc on the schedules if there were sports. And I didn't know what the, how you would, what you had done to look at that.
Well, the league and the state is looking at scheduling now. And obviously, that's going to change dramatically because of the late start date. So they've already just talked about doing quite a few less games per sport already because of not starting until September 8th with the first play date being September 18th, when normally our first play date is in August. And so that's kind of changed schedules already. And as they look at schedules, they're looking at regionalization of schedules as well. And so, you know, we may be playing some teams that we don't normally play. We may be playing cross-conference teams, but we would, we'd likely be playing teams within our same geographic region as well. So if there was an impact, it would probably be, it would probably impact everybody. And to the question about red, I, I hate to say, I'm guessing that, but I hate to say, you know, succinctly about it, you know, because every day, something different comes up. And so you never know what, what folks are going to, you know, decide to do and what is best. So our goal is certainly to make sure that we provide the safest environment for our students and staff. And so those decisions will, will be made, you know, as, as, as that happens. I'm going to guess, though, that you're right. Probably if we're in the red, we'd probably be taking a break.
All right. Thanks, everyone.
April?
So I was on the Transportation Subcommittee for the START Committee. And so I just wanted to bring up something that Sarah had said, which would be a board issue, which was she had said that one thing that they may need to take into consideration is our policy on which students in Scarborough we do transport. Because we have a policy which dictates how far you have to live from a school and how far you have to be from a specific bus stop in order to receive transportation. And I got the impression, and someone, correct me please if I'm wrong, but I got the impression that there's not a lot of enforcement of that policy happening in some places. And so Sarah had said to our Subcommittee that, you know, one thing that we may need to look at as a board and, and as a policy committee was our policies around transportation, too. So that's something to put a pin in for, for maybe later on in August, when we get the results of the survey back.
Thank you, April. Mike, I have a couple of questions for you. When it comes to choosing whether or not a sport, you know, a season is on or off, is it, is there a chance that it could be sport by sport? That they could determine that one sport has a higher chance of risk than another does? Or is it an all-in, all-out?
I can tell you right now what they're planning for with athletics is they, there was a proposal originally to mix up the sports. So play what they considered lower-risk sports in the fall and then, you know, amp that up as the year went on. That, that was decided that that was not going to happen in Maine. That in Maine, if we were to do activities, they were going to be the normal seasonal activities that were always offered during that time. Again, because things are ever-changing, I don't know if I can answer yes or no, but my best guess is that, you know, there may very well be some sports that they say, we just don't see how we can do this. And then there may be some sports that they say, you know, we can absolutely do this. But again, where things are changing so much, I don't know if I can fully answer that.
Fair enough. And then the last question I had, had to do more with, like, doctor sign-offs and every two years, students have to turn those forms in. Is there any thought of maybe extending that for another year as not everybody can get in or some doctors aren't seeing patients right now?
We do, we do have a section on our webpage that talks specifically about that. What we've done in our registration document is we have increased the number of questions in the health section of our family ID registration for athletics. That what that did was it allowed us to meet the requirement of completing a health history form. So instead of doing a separate form for that, we embedded it in our registration for this year. So when people fill out their registration, they're going to be answering more health questions than they normally have had. But at the end of that, they'll have completed the health history form. There was an MPA rule that said that if you could not, if, if it was absolutely out of the question to get a physical, that as long as student athletes completed a health history form and that health history form was then reviewed by our athletic trainer and school nurses. And if they were not any medical indicators, then we would, we would approve participation for that season. It's really on a season-by-season basis with the physicals. The expectation certainly still is that every student has a physical every two years. But there is a bit of a loophole, I guess, for lack of a better word, that would account for a student not being excluded because they absolutely just could not get in to see their doctor. We've also worked out a deal with Maine Medical Partners. And Maine Medical Partners, it appears as if we're still working on the finishing touches of this. But it appears as if that the doctors from the Maine Medical Partners group would provide sports physicals for our student athletes if it came to that and they needed it. For example, if there was a pre-existing condition for a student, then they would be required to have a physical before they would be allowed to participate. If they still couldn't get in to see their doctor, then we would probably align them with a doctor from Maine Medical Partners.
All right. Thank you very much. April? Oh, sorry, your hand is back up. I just hadn't noticed that. All right. Any other questions for operations? Okay.
All right. So just to wrap us up here in terms of next steps, and we've talked about these things sprinkled along the way. As I think I mentioned earlier, we are, we will be putting together a parent survey to send out next week to be asking people to give us information about what their decision will be for the start of school and also what their plans are for transportation. At the school level, building leaders are conducting staff forums and, you know, central office leadership and HR folks are going to be sitting in on those as well so that we can answer and be responsive to questions that might be coming up for staff. We are going to be collecting and posting all of these great FAQs and putting them up on the web so that there is a treasure trove of resources, did you know, for the fall, for our plans, and then some parent forums as well.
Excellent. Um, thank you. This was incredibly comprehensive. It was so thorough. I really appreciate the, I can only imagine the number of hours that went into creating this document. So thank you.
And I would just say, we have an amazing community here because, you know, we, we don't, it's not just the people who are on this screen tonight, our building leaders who did this work. This is the work of our staff, our students, our parents, community members. There's a lot of heart for Scarborough, and I think that's what you see here. I would agree.
All right. Um, okay. Moving into new business. First thing on the agenda is a motion to approve the START framework as presented tonight.
So moved.
So moved. Second?
There's been a lot of discussion, so I'd like to limit us just a little bit, if possible. But if anyone has anything that they'd like to say?
I will.
Nick?
The only thing I want to say is that I think it's great when we can start a process like this by opening up this to a large number of people. I know there were at least 100 people involved in these different committees. I was on the health one as much as I could be. And a number of people just on that one with the wide breadth of expertise we had from pediatricians to parents to health experts, to people that were on the national committees that are talking about this. To come to this plan at this point is an incredible amount of work to try and winnow down all that expertise. And so I just want to echo what Diane said and say thank you. And also say thank you for opening this to community input so early in the process. I think it really helps us to gain some buy-in and bring anxiety down when a large number of people can be involved and be productive in the way they work.
Great. April?
Thanks, Diane. I, I really struggled this week, this month, this year with these opening plans and what we were going to do and what I'm going to, what decisions I'm going to make for my three children who are in the district. And so I want to make sure that people understand, you know, just how much thought and consideration went into these plans. I also want to say thank you to everybody who gave up their precious summer hours for the START Committee. And so I'm going to be supporting the plans as presented, even though there are still a million questions. And I know that we have to be fluid. And I trust that the administration is doing everything they can to answer everyone's questions and do what is in the best interest of all of our kids. My one request would be that from now until the start of school, we, I feel like the community just needs to hear more. We just need more communication, even if it's just a quick check-in from Sandy or Dan. You know, just letting the community know where we are in the process, what deadlines are coming up, things like that, just so that people feel really connected. Because we have been disconnected for so long now that I feel like in order to really come together as a district when we reopen the schools, that, that, that communication really is going to be critical.
I agree.
Sarah?
Thanks, Diane. I also just wanted to thank you guys for your hard work and, you know, for everyone in the community that volunteered their time and participated in these committees. I was feeling pretty anxious about tonight and then, you know, received the, the plan ahead of time and very quickly was, was put at ease because I realized how much thought and thoroughness went into the plan. So thank you very much for that. I think just, I'll also, as April said, I'll also be supporting this. I know that there's a lot of questions that are still standing, but, you know, we have to put the stake in the ground somewhere, and we're doing that tonight. And, and after we do this, you guys can go and sort of answer the other questions. I think, you know, just reading through some of the emails that we've gotten and then just thinking about the teacher needs, I, I'll also be supporting the decision to push back the school, the start of the school year to give teachers more time to plan. I guess I would just ask for maybe, you know, we're saying that we should be flexible and nimble and be able to adapt. And I guess I would just ask for that same consideration for teachers, depending on how they feel at the end or even in the middle of that training process, if they feel like they're ready. I don't think anybody will ever feel like 100% ready, but I think getting a gauge from them as to how they feel in those, you know, that first week. And if it, if they're not comfortable, what we can do. And whether that means a further delay or whatever. But I think, you know, we need our staff to be 100% on board in order for this to work for our students. So I guess I would just ask for that additional consideration.
Thank you. Hillary?
I just wanted to kind of echo what everybody else said and thank all the people. I know there were parents and teachers and nurses and staff, all kinds of staff members and everybody who came together. I think it is an advantage that we had such a large group that was able to come together and make some of these recommendations. And I, I also agree with what April said. I, I think that it's important to realize that, that, that the, the plan tonight, which I will be supporting, is a, is like a jumping off point, kind of like Sarah said, and that we don't have all the questions answered. And, and that's okay. We, you know, things change. Like, I mean, I think things are probably going to be changing by tomorrow. But that this provides kind of a general framework that, that I'm happy with thus far. And that I know there's a lot more work to happen. And, and as things change, different decisions might need to be made. And I think our supporting this tonight doesn't, doesn't mean that that, those decisions can't be made based on any new information that comes out or that things can't change based on questions that might have been answered or things that might not have gone the way you expected them to. So I just wanted to say that again, and that's, that goes to that fluidity. And the fact that we're approving this plan doesn't, doesn't take away from the fluidity that is going to need to be in place.
Thank you. Kristen?
I don't have much to add that hasn't been said, but I did want to say thank you for making the START Committee and to everyone that served on it. It was great to have all that input. And, you know, I'll support the plan, too. As much as we all want the answers to all the questions, it's just not possible. But I have every confidence that you are going to get those answers when we need them. Thanks for all the hard work.
Alicia?
I'd just like to echo and encourage the-
echo and encourage the continuous communication of the, the plan. And I think that that will go a long way to help alleviate anxiety because people are looking for answers. And I know we can't give them certainty, but I think that the, the best we can do is communicate to them, even if it is that we don't have all of the answers. And so I would just ask that that occur on sort of an ongoing basis. And I, I would also really love to see like a, a check-in a month or so after we start school to, to see where people are and make sure that things are working so we don't get too far down the road. And I would just ask parents to be patient as well with the process because of all of the hard work that everybody has done. Thank you for all of that. And, and know that we're putting our teachers in on the front lines of, of, of this and the stress that they're going through. A lot of them with trying to, to raise their own kids. And, and so this is going to be a really difficult time for them and, and stressful, and it's not going to be perfect. And so I just, I just hope that, you know, you see national headlines and statewide, nobody's happy with any of the solutions. And I think we're going to feel that in this, in, in the school district as well. And I just hope that people recognize that there's only imperfect solutions here.
Yeah. Um, I really want to echo what everyone has said. The thank yous can't be enough. But I'd also like to thank each of the board members. The questions tonight were really thoughtful. They were excellent. They were on topic. Reminder to the community, if you have questions, as Diane mentioned, there is going to be a running FAQ. Please send them to the board. We will make sure that they're getting on that document. We'll make sure that there's communication that's out there on where to find the FAQ so that you can keep up to date on where things are in, as we're moving forward. And to the staff, thank you so much for putting all of this together as well as for hosting both a staff forum and a parent forum in order to have that opportunity to hear the direct feedback from all of the constituents. I'm also in support of this. I think this is, this is a great place to begin from. And with that, Diane, if we could do the roll call vote?
Sure. Ms. Dergan?
Yes.
Mrs. Giftos?
Yes.
Dr. Gill?
Yes.
Ms. Casalonas?
Yes.
Ms. Layton?
Yes.
Mrs. Seither?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Thank you. 7.2 is a modification to the 2020, 2021 school calendar. I know that we've heard a couple of allusions to what that's going to be, but if Diane or Sandy, if you want to tee up what that will be.
Be happy to do that. So, given the reinventing of our schools, we are recommending that our staff have September 1, 2, and 3 as a days for planning. Currently, what you passed last spring was those would be student days. But we are recommending that we turn those over to being staff days. Given all the reports that you heard tonight, the academics, the health, operations, all of that work really needs to be front-loaded. And more time would be absolutely wonderful if you could support that. That would be great. In addition to that, and if I'm going too fast, let me know. What we would recommend that we cancel the October 9th and the March 12th professional development days and make those student days. Thirdly, we would request that you take out late start time from September to December. And we would anticipate that maybe we're going to be in a hybrid model. We don't know. But also to consider that from January to June, we would have a late start. Now, that could change depending upon what schools look like from January to June. So again, let me just quickly review. The student days currently that were, what that, are on the calendar is September 1, 2, and 3. We're recommending that that be teacher days, teacher training days, working on protocols, working on technology training, all the things that you heard tonight. And secondly, that we cancel October 9th and 12th as professional development days and make those two student days. So what that does really in effect, it gives you, we've lost one student day out of the whole calendar, just so we're clear on that. And again, we would take out the late start from September to December. And we would still have the late start from January to June. However, that could change as well.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Motion to approve the 2020, 2021 school calendar as presented?
So moved.
Second.
And discussion. April?
Nope, sorry.
Okay.
I'm on my phone and so my interface isn't what I'm used to.
All right. Well, I was gonna say, if you need to, just raise your hand. I'll keep an eye on you. Nick?
So, I just want to clear, clarify that the calendar before had 177 student days and 882 staff days. There are still going to be 182 staff days, but we're down to 176 students. So basically we've gone from a 177.5 to a 170, 177.5 to 176.6. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. That's all I needed.
Kristin?
I, I support all of these changes and I am really glad to see the pushback of the START date on here. I can't tell you how many times in those START meetings we'd talk about like a really great idea and it was like, oh, that's also going to need PD. That's going to need PD. We're going to need more time to do this. And I really, really think that that's going to be a great investment of time so that when the students do come back to the building, the teachers will feel comfortable. They'll have hopefully everything set in place and that's only going to benefit the students.
Alicia?
I just want to clarify, this was a recommendation made by the, the committee?
It was import from several of the people throughout those groups talking about particularly the, the opening of the school day. Yes.
Okay. I mean, I, I support the, you know, the work of the committee and the rationale for it. I, I worry about the impact to families, but obviously our priority is being prepared for, for school. I just wanted to confirm that that was the recommendation. Thank you.
Hillary?
Um, I, I mean, I, I definitely support pushing the START date back. I mean, you hate to lose student days, but I think that the value of having more time for the teachers to be prepared outweighs that. I, I'm concerned that it's, it's still not enough time. It's, you know, that's three extra days. Well, actually, yeah, it's, it's only three extra days. And I just, you know, we're asking teachers to do a lot and to make a lot of changes and just to their practice, but then also just to the way they interact with, you know, their building and their schools. And so that all requires professional development, like Kristin said, in addition to planning, you know, for themselves and with their, with their colleagues. I, I just, I don't know if I would take away the October professional development day. I feel like that could be really useful. Basically a month into school to see, to, you know, just for teachers to check in if there's any additional professional development that needs to happen or just additional planning that they, they find that they might need. So I just, I guess that's kind of my only thing. I, I'm fine with removing the late starts because they're basically being replaced by the Wednesday afternoons that teachers will have to plan. But I do think that we should consider keeping the October professional development day. Oh, and sorry, I just wanted to add too that I'll be very interested in hearing about whether the state waives the minimum requirements for student days because that also will have a big effect on what we can do with the calendar.
Yeah.
Kristin?
Yeah, I mean, Hillary brings up a good point about the October day that it might be useful. How much? Have we heard from the teachers how much those Wednesday afternoons are going to satisfy what they need to do as we start the beginning of the year? Does that? Would that be enough for them?
Perhaps a couple principals.
Hours a week, right, that they'll have. And I, and I, don't get me wrong, I think they can use endless time right now, but do we know how they feel about that, the October?
I would refer to the principals if, if one of them could just jump in on and mention.
Well, I can, I can just speak to the, the weekly time that we spent together during distance learning. And, you know, the grade level time that we were able to, to spend. And I know, you know, Kelly Crosby mentioned this in our leadership meeting the other day, that that was invaluable time that, especially at K5, we're not able to have due to the, the way that K5 teachers, you know, they teach everything and they're not able necessarily to meet for, for long periods of time every week together. And that was something we were able to do during distance learning was really have dedicated time to meet. And that's what they're really going to need is weekly time to meet together and plan, whether that's in a building or across buildings. So, you know, on top of the front-loading piece of, of PD to get up and, and running, I think those Wednesdays are going to be really valuable. And we did talk about that a little bit in our smaller groups about having some kind of a, of, whether it was a Friday or a Wednesday, but some kind of time to kind of debrief and, and talk about how things are going and what, you know, how are we going to plan? And so, you know, while we don't have all of that feedback from all of our, all of our teachers right now, I can add that perspective from, from K5.
At the middle of the school, oh, sorry. Ditto everything that Kelly MM said, but also add that it's so critical to have it at the same time for everybody because now more than ever, we're going to need to be able to connect across phase levels because what we've always expected students to enter with, for example, will look different this year. So those conversations, class by class and teacher by teacher are going to be critical. And having the designated time to do that in addition to grade level meeting time is, is a need for teachers. And I've never heard a teacher say, oh, we've got way too much planning time.
At the middle of school, teachers can always use more time, but this three and a half hours will add a lot at the middle school. Teachers will still have their time built into the schedule to meet also. And we will also still have our Monday professional development after school. So there's some teacher design time, our staff meeting, and then curriculum committee time.
I'm sorry if that came out wrong. I meant, will that be enough to sort of take away that October day? Like, I don't, I, like, would it, would they prefer it and?
I think it's fine. I think it's fine to take that October day. I, I do.
I think when we brought the proposal forward, we did not feel comfortable bringing a proposal forward that would require a waiver when that hasn't been granted to us yet. But certainly if that is the will of the board, you get to make those decisions.
Um, I do just also want to say that I'm pretty sure there's PD that we had approved a couple meetings ago that start on the 25th and 26th of August for teachers. So this would be three additional days on top of those. And to echo what both Kristin and Hillary said, it would be interesting if we get the waivers, even if we don't, again, will of the board and all of that. If the teachers want that October 12th PD day, I would not be opposed to it. I think that this is a very different situation and they may come back and say that they need more, and I would never want to not give the staff that time for development if it's necessary. So I would be flexible for that. Just wanted to put that out there. Hillary?
Is the minimum not 175 days?
That is the minimum, but there are some other things.
So what would we need a waiver for if we kept the October date? We'd be at 175 student days.
Currently, yes.
Right.
Um, I think we're ready to vote?
All right. Ms. Dergan?
Well, I don't, I don't want to take the October date away, but I don't want to vote no because I, because I agree, I agree with, with moving the START date back.
Move to amend it.
Oh. Can I do that now or is it too late? Can you take back the, call the vote?
For you, yes, I will take back the call to a vote.
All right. So I guess I'd like to amend that the calendar, we accept the calendar as printed, except for the October professional development day would remain a professional development day.
Second.
Discussion?
I guess, I, sorry. I, I said everything I already wanted to say. I guess I would be very interested in finding out whether teachers feel that that day is valuable as well. I don't know. I mean, either way, we might be in the position of having to change the calendar again, so I'm not sure.
I just, before I, before I move on, I just want to make sure you were finished. You kind of stopped like half sentence.
I know. Now I'm done. Sorry.
Okay.
I'm tired.
Sandy, I think you had started to say something.
I, I think, putting my teacher hat on, I think teachers would love to have that day in October. They work really hard. There's never truly enough staff development time in any school system. So I can't imagine that they would not welcome that. And I think that would be very supportive of the board if you vote that in.
Thank you. April?
My only concern is just that now we're at 175 days. And so if there is no waiver presented at the state level, this would be the first time in, as long as I can ever remember, that we approved a calendar that had the bare minimum number of student days. So that makes me a little apprehensive, I guess. But this is also an insane time and I can appreciate the circumstances that we are in. And I am also open to the idea that, that staff development is going to be more needed and more critical to our staff than maybe necessarily an added student day. So, up to my two cents.
Okay. Nick?
Needed, I'm not needed. I, I agree with April. I'm a little, I'm a challenge to bring it down to 175 for, for the reason that she stated, but also regardless of how much planning and how much work and how much innovation. for, for the reason that she stated, but also regardless of how much planning and how much work and how much innovation we do with a hybrid model or online model or even some version of normalcy, even though I think we know the green light won't really be normal, even if it's a green light. Our days aren't going to probably be as productive as they would normally be because of all the transition and all the change. And that just brings anxiety to students and staff and everyone. So I worry about bringing the total number of days down when in the back of my head, I'm also thinking there's no way that the days in this fall will be the same as the days in previous falls because of what we're all accommodating, just to figure out how we, how every day even looks. So to bring the number of days down to the bare minimum, also knowing that the, I don't want to say the quality, because that's not the right word, but the, the amount you're going to be able to do in a day is going to be reduced probably as well.
Kristin?
Um, I agree with that point, Nick, that it probably will be less productive. But I would argue sort of on the flip side of that, that though a day off for these students after what they are going to be enduring for the beginning of school, it might not be the worst thing in the world for them to also have that time. I mean, just knowing, and I know it's not going to be like the spring, but it's emotionally draining, especially on some of these little kids, or maybe I just feel especially because I have little kids. But it's a lot for them. And I, as a parent, I would welcome another day off. I agree with you, though. It's, we're losing more productivity, but.
Um, I will say I'm in support of the amendment as well. I think that to Sandy's point, there are never enough hours for professional development. So I just think that it's, we need this. If the staff comes back and during those staff forums says, nope, we don't need it, I'd happily put this back on the calendar to address it again. But I don't want to take something away that I think has benefit. In looking at the clock, if we're comfortable and ready to go for a vote.
Ms. Dergan?
Yes.
Mrs. Giftos?
Yes.
Dr. Gill?
No.
Ms. Casalonis?
Yes.
Ms. Leighton?
Yes.
Mrs. Seither?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Motion passes. Um, I am adding something real quick to the.
Wait, and just the, just Hillary's amendment passed. The main motion is still on the table.
Thank you. I am so glad that you are at that. So now moving back to the main motion. We can vote on the main motion.
Ms. Dergan?
Yes.
Mrs. Giftos?
Wait, wait, I'm voting for the, the calendar. You just approved the calendar as amended by Hillary's motion? And then now we're voting on the calendar as Sandy first proposed it?
No, you just approved the, you just approved that, the amendment, and now you're voting on it as amended.
Correct. Thank you. Yes.
Dr. Gill?
Even though I didn't love the amendment, I agree with the rest of it, so I guess.
Ms. Casalonis?
Yes.
Ms. Leighton?
Yes.
Mrs. Seither?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
And Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Excellent. And now, under policy BE, I am asking for the board to extend our meeting beyond the 9:30 time to finish all of the new business that is still ahead of us tonight.
It's almost, it's almost second, begrudgingly.
Agreed. Ready to vote.
Ms. Dergan?
Yes.
Mrs. Giftos?
Uh, yes.
Dr. Gill?
Yes.
Ms. Casalonis?
Yes.
Ms. Leighton?
Yes.
Mrs. Seither?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
And Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
I know, Max. I promise I'm going to hustle.
It's cool. Take your time.
I would say it looks like beautiful where you are. I'm hoping that there's stars and.
It's lovely, actually. I don't mind this at all. It is lovely.
Yeah. 7.3 is our initial determination on the school reopening. And what this does, this is while we know tomorrow starts, the information that comes from the state and that would really set us in motion to determine, are we yellow, are we red, are we green? The board needs to set that first stage. And then moving forward, every two weeks, as we've heard through the presentation, Sandy is going to be the one to make that determination of what's going to happen next. But we do need to set that first parameter, kind of the benchmark of where we are. So I'm just going to ask either Diane or Sandy to share that if school is opening tomorrow, what would the statistics tell us and what would the color be that you would recommend our district to be in to set that first stage?
Well, you know, tomorrow Department of Ed will be putting out an announcement, I think around lunchtime, on how we fall as far as yellow, red, or green. And that will determine how we move forward. So, I mean, if I had to speculate, I would say we may fall in the yellow. And, but I, that's just my opinion. I have no data to really support that. Diane, you want to jump in on?
The thing I would just add would be, when they first talked to us about this metric, which is probably right around two weeks ago, I had gone online to see where Cumberland County fit in the metric. And at the time, I'll admit, I haven't had a minute this week to look to see where we are. But at the time, we were at 3.7 people per 100,000 in terms of the rate of infection for COVID. And that puts us in the yellow range according to the metric, because the yellow range of the metric is between one and 10 cases per 100,000. And it would appear from everything I see on the news that we're holding pretty steady, maybe declining a little bit, but not, you know, not much difference.
Okay, thank you. So as I go to make this motion, I want it to be really clear that this is not necessarily what we're going to be when we start school. Starting tomorrow, Sandy will be able to send out communication to our families to say, this is where we are. And based on the every-two-week cycle, we may see three more announcements in those communications that we could change or we could stay consistent. But this is really just the board setting the stage so that from moving forward as of tomorrow, hopefully new time, Sandy will own all of that communication going forward. So with that said, I am making a motion to the school reopening under the yellow model as presented tonight.
Move to approve.
Second.
And discussion.
Why, why do we have to choose one today?
Because based under the information that had come out with the governor's meeting and in talking with Sandy and Diane, the board needed to set that stage. And we will not be setting that stage moving forward. The district will determine where we are, but we really needed to provide that initial guideline of where we were as a district for starting school.
Okay, well, I guess I'll just say, I mean, I thought that the, the, you know, we, we did approve the framework for red, yellow, or green. I'm, I'm comfortable with Sandy and Diane making that decision as needed, as, or as information changes. I guess I will say that I, I am, I would like to see our, I know that, sorry, I didn't plan for this one. So I guess my point is that I know that the, the, the metric that gets released by the state as to whether our county is red, yellow, or green is not a directive. But I would be very uncomfortable going lower than what that status is just as a district. So meaning that I would be very uncomfortable with yellow if the Cumberland County metric was red. And I also just wanted to clarify again that as it stands with the, with the recommendations that are in place today, we don't have an option of being green because we don't have the space to accommodate that. So really, our options are, as of today, unless recommendations change, are yellow and red. Is that correct?
I would say yes, that's.
Is that everybody's understanding? Okay. I just want to make sure my understanding matches with everybody else's understanding.
Alicia?
Can you repeat your motion?
Sure. My motion is that the board is recommending that the initial determination of the school reopening is yellow. And then moving forward, all decisions would be made by the superintendent on what our color is based on the guidelines from the state.
So our, we're voting on our color as of today, which may change tomorrow?
Correct.
And we're authorizing the superintendent to make that decision even if it's inconsistent with the statewide governance?
No, he would follow the statewide governance, but moving forward, he would be responsible for communicating out on a biweekly basis what that guidance is. So similar to how he had communicated in the spring, where we were and, you know, we needed a week, we needed two weeks, we're going to remain remote for the remainder of the spring. He would continue to make those decisions. It would not come back to the board to determine what we're going to do with what we hear from the state.
Okay. I, I mean, I just want to be clear, as long as we're, the expectation is that we're following the CDC and DOE recommendations, then.
Absolutely.
Obviously, I support.
April?
Yeah, I just want to say, like, a fairly clear case, I think, was presented tonight for us being at best in the yellow. And if we determine or get guidelines from the state that Cumberland County's numbers are not, something that would warrant a, a yellow from the state, then, you know, I think we're authorizing Sandy to, you know, make those changes accordingly. But for tonight, you know, I, I really think yellow is kind of the only option. And I think that it helps the community to understand where we're at and start their planning process and to have a realistic expectation of what the opening of schools is going to look like, you know, without setting this initial standard tonight.
Great, thank you. And Nick?
I was just checking. All right. Um, yeah, I was actually just looking at the, the data and what Diane was saying. And Cumberland County, we have just over 2,000 confirmed cases. And that converts to, if you look at the actual conversion per million people, it's 7,100, 7,200 cases per million. So I think that pretty squarely, that's today's stats, pretty squarely puts us in the yellow from what I've read about it. So I'm completely comfortable with that designation. And then moving forward, I mean, even if Cumberland County, we've talked about this already, even if Cumberland County went green, you know, in a, in a week or two, we're not ready to go green. And so that's why I think it's so important that we use that data as, as guidance and we allow our leadership to decide how we move forward. I mean, ultimately, I wouldn't be comfortable with us being more cavalier than the color would tell us to be. And I think we can all agree with that because our student safety is number one. But if we're just sitting and looking at the data we have available tonight before we hear from the governor tomorrow, I think yellow makes the most sense. It's the best we can do anyway, given the resources that we have.
Thank you. Okay. I think we're ready to vote. Diane?
Ms. Dergan?
Yes.
Mrs. Giftos?
Yes.
Dr. Gill?
Yes.
Ms. Casalonis?
Yes.
Ms. Leighton?
Yes.
Mrs. Seither?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
And Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, 7.4, Sandy has the high school mural.
Thank you. And I've got some slides coming up. So a little history here. When I came on board, I soon learned that we had changed the high school mascot probably about 20 years ago. And, you know, through connecting with people and learning and listening, I did come to the board and mentioned about the Scarborough High School picture that is in the plumber gym. So that's what I'm here to talk about tonight, and I'm just going to go through my bullets and certainly try to make this informative and, and put the knowledge out there about my recommendation. So again, the mascot name was Redskins, and that started in 1938. And it went to the board to be changed on September 21st, 2000. As a reminder, I know the board knows this, and to the public, LD 944 is an act to ban Native American mascots in all public schools. And that was passed by the legislature in May 16, 2019. And I think if you're in tune with other districts like Wells and places up north, you know, it was obviously quite public about when people would change those mascots. And I'm sure that was very public here in Scarborough as well. The third bullet, Robert Scammon, who was an art teacher, a good soul, actually took upon himself to paint a Native American image in the plumber gym at the high school where it still exists. An Indian head reproduction was removed from the outside of the high school when the mascot name was changed to Red Storm. Go on to the next slide. I put up some assumptions. First assumption is currently we're living where peaceful protests are sweeping the nation and racism must end in all communities. Second assumption, we stand strong with being a welcome and inclusive environment for all. Third assumption, heritage and tradition are not sufficient reasons to keep an offensive symbol. Fourth assumption, the picture of the red skin is offensive to community. Last bullet, red skin does symbolize racism. On the third slide, a little history, if you remember, legal counsel from Drummond and Woodson came to one of our board meetings in the fall of 19, 2019. And this, and, and the attorney said the following, "The school board is exposing itself and the town to have legal challenges by leaving this red skin painted in the gym. It is offensive. The image depicts a Native American individual. It violates, violates the spirit of the law because it represents back to when, in fact, the mural was a mascot of Scarborough High School." "The public display of the American image painted on Scarborough High School plumber gym wall has been repeatedly been offensive to members of the community." Scarborough High School plumber gym wall has been repeatedly been offensive to members of the community. Upon review of this, I sat down with five or six individuals, because sometimes I like to test my assumptions, I like to test my thinking before I go public. And so I just like to recognize that Isabel Lou, who was a junior, was on a small committee, we met two times with Jackie Perry, former board member, in fact, she was here when they changed the mascot. Principal Susan Catch. Assistant principal Jake Brown. KD, director Michael Gage. And then also Leanne was able to come into our meeting by phone. Again, it wasn't so much to ask them if they felt that this is the way to go. I gave them my recommendation and I listened and I got feedback. It was one more step for me to get import before coming to you as a board. It is my recommendation recommendation to the board at this time that the painting be removed. And um I would also add, I don't have a lot of information yet, but Isabel Lou, our junior has some ideas of maybe taking a picture of that and putting it in a history component of the high school. It could be a learning experience. She just had some ideas generated in her head and and I would encourage her to work with administration at the high school if there's a way that they feel that they would like to somehow capture that in a different way. But I'm not, I'm not going to get involved in that at this point in time. Basically, my recommendation is the board to remove it and I'd be happy to take any questions that you have.
Nick?
So I'm one of three Scarborough alumni on the board. Two of us graduated as Redskins and and one of us graduated as a Red Storm, if I'm doing my if I'm doing my numbers right. And I've had a lot of conversations with people since this last came up on the board about the about the Native American likeness. And there's a couple of things that I want to say. First, the one one thing that was misconstrued with some of our members of our community was that this was the original mural from the original gym. It's not. This is actually a reproduction of the original mural that was in the original gym, which has been the music room for over 30 years. So when people remember that gym and feel like this is painting over that piece of history, that piece of history has actually been gone for a long time. So when I explained that, they were like, oh. Um, but this Native American likeness is a likeness of a of a mascot that a lot of us remember and I'll always remember it, I'll always have those memories, I'll always have my yearbooks, my varsity jacket and all of those things. Um, but when I think about the behavior that we innocently displayed 20 plus years ago. The chanting in the bleachers, the senior member, the member of the senior class that had to dress up in basically war paint and run around the gym, you would never do that today, you wouldn't even think about it. So you live and you learn. And when I look at this, that's what I that's what I think. I think we live and we learn as a community, and we learned this lesson over 20 years ago. And this is a remnant piece of that history that I think it's it's time to put to rest. Um, and I love the idea of preserving it. I love the idea of preserving its likeness and paying tribute to that piece of history. But also taking it off the wall of the gymnasium because it's not who our school is today, and I think we should be proud of that evolution. I'll admit that in 2001, when I was in college and heard about it, I was a little miffed, but that was 20 years ago. And we've all grown and and I agree with the superintendent's recommendation, I'll be supporting its removal.
Max?
I'm actually um really glad to hear you say that, Nick. I was very um nervous, admittedly, going into this because I know at the last meeting, I or the initial meeting where we talked about this, there was some like people with differing opinions about like what this means and everything, and I'm really glad that like you, I agree with you, I think it's very inappropriate and it should definitely be removed. I think that it's like, I was trying to explain it to someone and because they didn't really see eye to eye with me, they didn't understand my rationale, and I think the only way I can really describe it is that it's almost analogous to like if our mascot was like a slave and we had a photo or like a painting of a slave on our wall, even though it wasn't our mascot anymore, like it is pretty much the same thing, like it's just very racist, whatever. I think it's really good that we are acknowledging this issue, you know, I've been a part of the anti-racism coalition that did meet with Mr. Prince and um I'm really glad to see our district heading in this direction of actually like taking initiative on issues and really facing this head on. I think it's a really good direction for us.
Hillary?
Um. So I um I wrote a couple of things down because I did not say what I wanted to say the last time this came up. Um. I think. Sorry, let me just get my statement, if I can find it. Um, I just, I I I think that um this should definitely be removed. I can't find my statement, of course. Um. Hold on just one second. Does somebody else want to go?
Yeah, Sarah, if you want to pop in and then when you're done, Hillary, if you can.
Yeah, sure. Um, I don't have much to say other than I agree it should be removed. I guess I just don't know, I think we've said I think a couple of times that this is not a board decision, so I I don't know necessarily that we need to vote on it. Um, but if Sandy, if you feel like you need the support of the board in order to do that, then if you have that support, I absolutely think it should be removed. Everything that Max said, did I?
So, sorry, do you want me to go, Leanne?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, so I I think it needs to be removed. I found it increasingly difficult to abide the fact that the offensive image remains on our school property. Uh, we've been told not only that it's offensive, but that it also violates the spirit of the law. Um. And we have been assured that the image is offensive and damaging. We've also been told that students don't feel welcome in our school. Um, and I think that um I I agree that I don't think it's a board level decision, it should have just been removed when the name was changed. Um, but again, if you need my support, it should absolutely be removed. Um, and I don't think that it needs to remain in any shape or form um in in the historical society or a picture in the in the um in the high school or anything of the sort. Um, it was inappropriate, no matter what the intentions were, um, and now that we know better, we should do better.
Thank you. April?
Um, I didn't intend to say very much, um, but a couple of other comments of spurred me to make sure that everyone knows my position. Um, so and when this conversation first came up, Leanne, you were absent and I was chairing the meeting for the first time ever. Um, and this delicate topic got brought up, and I think in my um wanting to make this feel like a discussion that the community was a part of and not just a decision that seven people were making without having had the discussion. I think some people got the impression that I was in favor of keeping um the mural, which I am absolutely not in favor of keeping the mural. I 100% agree and believe that this is something that needs to be removed. I also don't necessarily believe that it's a board um decision that we need to vote on. Um. But I did at the time, and I stand by this, um, think that we are better as a community for having these conversations. Um, and part of our role as the school board is to, you know, further these conversations with the community and be the ambassadors between the district and the community. And so I'm glad and I'm proud that Sandy um took our advice and sought um some conversations with some members of our um student population, um, and thank you Sandy for bringing this forward again, um, for public discussion.
Thank you. Alicia?
Sandy, I love the assumptions that you had. Um, I thought that they really reflected where we are and and why. Um. I support your decision. I, again, we heard from Melissa Huey that it's not a a board decision. Um, so I I also don't think that we should be voting on it, but I do support your decision. Um, the arguments that I've heard against removal relate to um sent to the sentimental value, the paying tribute to the um artist. And um I also heard an argument that um it's not, it's not meant to be offensive and and um, from my perspective, we can pay tribute to the artist in other ways. And, you know, if you're not a member of um the the class um that's being discriminated against, you know, I don't think that you can decide what what's offensive or not. And um after having heard from that class of people that it is um offensive, I I just don't see any um humane or just alternative and and I support what I think is is right. Um, so I'm glad you reached that conclusion. Thank you for that.
Um, I echo everything that everyone has said tonight. Um, and I'm happy to um support you on this decision, Sandy. And thank you for bringing it to us, and I promise that, you know, we are not going to be um making these sorts of decisions on a regular basis. Um, but I am more than happy right now to, oh, Kristin, I am so sorry.
Okay, I didn't have, I didn't have much to add other than you have my support and I appreciate the historical context that Nick offered and I, as a not being from here, I'm not sure I would have been as effective maybe in some of the conversations you've had and I just appreciate the background, but I do support the removal of it.
Um, so with that said, Sandy, I am very happy to motion to approve that the painting be removed.
And? I'll move.
Second? And I think we're ready to vote.
Ms. Dergan?
Yes, absolutely, remove it.
Ms. Giftos?
Yes.
Dr. Gill?
Yes.
Ms. Casalonis?
Yes.
Ms. Layton?
Yes.
Mrs. Seither?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Motion passes. Um, I need to swap headsets really quick and I'm going to see if this will work. This is not going to be good. Alright, it didn't like that, so I may or may not cut out. Um, 7.5 is in-person school board meetings? Oh crap. Okay, I think I'm in now. Um, it did not reconnect, so if I drop off, it's because I don't have um sound. Um, 7.5 is in-person school board meetings. We need to discuss about our coming back um into public sessions.
Do you want to motion, Leanne, before we have discussion?
Yes, please.
Is now everyone waiting on me to make the motion? I I don't know how to make it enough, I don't have anything in front of me.
Move to um resume in-person school board meetings, starting at the next scheduled board meeting.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Nick, go ahead.
Okay, so um obviously, this is bigger than just, hey, welcome back. Um. Because I I looked at the state website, there's a whole, and I said it to everybody, actually, at one point, there's a whole piece about town meetings and what that looks like, and I know there's been a lot of discussion nationally about school boards and meeting virtually, and and I've seen some well-crafted but pretty snide comments about how can you continue to meet remotely if you're going to be putting students back in school? If we're going to resume meeting in person, we are going to have to discuss and decide on all the different PPE we're going to put in place for ourselves, and does that mean all seven of us or actually what, there's nine that sit at that table? I don't think we can sit nine people at that dais, so that's going to have to look very different, or some of us remote, or some of us in a different room. You put dividers between people. I mean, town council's looking at this too, right? So I'm interested to see what they do, but um obviously, if there's a way for us to gather in person that's safe, I want us to be able to do that, but I also want to respect anybody among us that has special health concerns, either in themselves or in a family member, that would be putting someone at risk by doing that, and I want to be completely accommodating of those. I I personally don't have that issue, but if there are members of this group that fit into that boat, I hope everyone feels comfortable voicing that and continuing to to take the precautions they need to take. So it's a big, it's a, it's a big discussion, I think.
Thanks, Nick. I can't see the hand raised, so Max, why don't you go ahead, Max?
So there are actually 10 of us, if you count me, uh, just putting it out there. Um, but I would love to meet in person. I can't really make that decision for everyone. But like, I do have some health issues, but I am willing to meet in person, so just putting it out there.
Thanks, Max. Kristin?
Um, I'm, I'm also okay meeting in person. I, like Nick, would like to know what that's going to look like, and I, I think I also wonder, I know that the restrictions are going up to 100, but how is that piece of it going to be handled? How you know, is someone going to be there enforcing that the members of the public are wearing masks? Or is that going to be a requirement? How are we going to handle? You know, the microphones, the ones that we use and the ones that public speakers will use.
Alicia?
Have we talked to anybody from IT to find out if we can still um have the Zoom capacity as well? In the event that we exceed 50 or 100 people? Diane, it looks like Diane knows that.
Yeah, so I can weigh in on that. Um, I know that I've been talking with Dawn Beijing from IT. Um, and we're looking to contract with ProAV um to make it possible for us to be live, but then also still have a Zoom component. And so that wouldn't necessarily just hold true for the current time, but is, you know, something that we, a practice that we could follow moving forward.
Thank you. And and then I was also wondering if there, if we have the capacity to hold meetings in a different location where we have more of an opportunity to socially distant. Mm-hmm.
That's a really good point.
Like the Wentworth Cafeteria would be awesome because we could have our everybody spread out.
I I do have a couple of concerns. Um, I, on a personal level, my bubble is very, very small. Um, I do everything I can to protect my dad. Um, so the idea of going to in-person meetings and having potentially, you know, that exposure at town hall is not my favorite idea. Um, I also understand, you know, people are going to be making decisions, personal decisions about sending their kids back to school. about sending their kids back to school. And so I would probably be the member of the board. Well, and this is an assumption, and I shouldn't make assumptions. I'm not super comfortable going back to in-person meetings. But I would consider it if the proper precautions were in place and we could maintain social distancing and people were wearing masks and I had confidence that the microphones were, you know, being appropriately cleaned and all of those kinds of component issues that are not our job to figure out logistically. And then my other concern is about if we had to have an executive session, what that space looks like, because those meetings need to be private. But a lot of the spaces we're talking about are fairly large and not private. That would need to take into consideration.
I am back. I had to come in in a different direction. I echo a lot of what April said. I do have some concerns about coming back in, wanting to make sure that we can be adequately spaced. It would also be contingent on, I think to me, where we are as far as the district. If we are not allowing all of our students into our room, should we consider not allowing all of the board members into our room? Really just following that suit. I also have some, like, family situation where I've been really good and very cautious. Those are all pieces that I need to weigh in as well, whether or not I'm ready to give one for the other. So it would really, to April's point, I want to make sure that we've got that distancing in place and totally would understand anyone on the board who was uncomfortable with being in person. And I'm going to hope that we can remain utilizing Zoom and YouTube. I think the participation has gone up tremendously. I don't want to lose that. And I apologize if I've said things that other people have. Hillary?
I think that, you know, April made a good point. You know, we're giving our students the opportunity to go in a hybrid model, but also the choice to stay home. And I think that might be the direction that the board should follow. Because, you know, while I might be comfortable going in person, you know, yesterday, today, my kid's getting tested for COVID, and I wouldn't be able to go in person if we had a meeting tonight. So we need to be able to accommodate people who might not be comfortable because of their family situation, but also people who can't go, either because they're quarantined or sick. And I think that we just need to make sure that if that is the case, where there are some people in person and some people over Zoom, that that interface is able to work, however that might work.
Nick?
You're muted.
Nick, you're on mute.
You're muted.
That's a great introduction, too. No, so we have one meeting scheduled in August, right? It sounds like hearing everybody talk, and we're going to learn a lot in the next 24 hours. We're going to have the first designation from the governor about what she recommends by county for the schools to reopen. We're going to have at least one refresh of that before our next school board meeting. I would propose that we consider keeping our next meeting, our August meeting, in this format. And if we're going to go live, we look at doing it at our first September meeting, because I think we're going to learn a lot between now and then. Not to mention, this whole thing could change so much in the next month. Who knows what it'll look like in September? So I don't feel like, I guess I don't feel like after hearing everyone else talk, and I know I spoke first, but after hearing everyone else as well, I don't know that we're ready to make that determination to go in person yet. I think if we only have one meeting in August, we keep it here and we look at going in person in September, where we're going to learn a little bit more and we'll know more about what our schools are going to look like as well.
Thank you. Great point. Sarah?
I actually, as comfortable as I am right now sitting in my yoga pants, and as much as I have enjoyed, like, the, and I think we've benefited from this. This format has benefited from engagement. We have a ton more engagement. We had 170 people watching on YouTube. That's more than any other meeting at law in person. I do think we need to figure out a way to maintain that. I also, I guess I'll take a different approach, Nick, to the August meeting in that, like, people are going to be looking for leadership and looking for people to make them feel comfortable. And if we're going to be asking our kids to go back to school in September, then I think we need to show them that we're comfortable doing it. And it doesn't have to be everybody. I think it can be a hybrid model. But we have to practice what we preach. And so I would like to, I would, I would be in favor of having that August meeting in some capacity in person.
Thank you. Kristin?
Can we get sometime soon, like, I don't know who's even responsible for setting up a safe environment? Who's going to, like, is town council already working on what that looks like?
They are. My understanding is that April meeting, August meeting is in person.
So they'll already have it figured out? Can they share with us what precautions they're taking and how they're handling public comment and all that stuff?
Sure, I can get that information.
Just seems, I mean, I'm okay with doing it. I just feel like it seems premature that we don't have any of the details worked out.
That's the same thing that we're asking for the students, right? We have a direction, and there's still some details to work out. So we have a direction and we'll figure out the details. And if we can't figure out the details, then we act it, you know?
That's fair, Sarah. I think I just will reiterate that we're giving parents and families the choice. And so this idea that we're, to practice what we preach. You know, I voted to approve the plan for the return to school, but I don't know that I'll send my kids back to school. And so I don't feel like I have to show up at a public meeting to prove myself. And I know you don't mean it aggressively. I just...
Nope. I think, you know, we have to have, we have to have a framework that allows people to be remote for a variety of reasons, whether it's just personal or, like, in Hillary's situation, she's quarantined. You know, we can't, we have to, we have to figure it out logistically and technologically. So that's all I know.
Sure. I think you brought up a great point right there, Sarah, about what we're asking. I would counter it just a small amount, where we know that we've got weeks ahead before staff and students are in the room. But you're right, leadership does need to come into play. So lots to think about in the next, like, 30 seconds. I'm just going to ask a technical question of Sandy and Diane. Do we actually need to make a motion to move back? Or is this something that we get the details and then when we go to post for our meeting in August, we're able to state that it is an in-public meeting?
I think as long as you put it out there to the public that you're making a change and the date of when the change is going to be, as long as you communicate that, even a couple of times, I think that's all, that's good enough.
Okay. And again, I apologize if this was talked about in the beginning. This isn't an either-or. Like, we can still have people joining us via Zoom. I mean, we know that the board members will, but the community is still going to have that, and they're still going to have the YouTube connection to us. None of that changes, correct?
That's correct. Because we are, like I said, we're partnering with Pro AV to make some changes to council chambers and incurring the cost for that.
Are we splitting that with council, or is that...
I think that we have not approached them to split it with us to date. Here's my little thief here, sorry. I promise I won't bring her to the in-person meeting so that she can, in council chambers. But in our discussions to date about that, we have received some CRF, some pretty significant CRF funds for COVID-related expenses. And this is an allowable expense within that. So we had talked about recognizing that the council had really extended themselves to be understanding of the situation with COVID during all of the budget process and that perhaps we could incur that. It's about $15,000 total for a permanent upgrade that would allow us to have this live streaming capability and this Zoom capability from here forward, not just as a temporary solution.
To Kristin's earlier point, I will make sure that I get details with respect to the cleaning and the distancing. So we'll have that. Any other comments? Sarah, your hand is up, so I wasn't sure if you had something else.
No, Derek.
Okay. All right. Bringing in items 7.6 and 7.7, it is...
And there's a motion.
We need, we have to go.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
That's okay. You were in and out.
I wasn't there.
No, it's okay. So Alicia motioned that we go into in-person meetings beginning at our August meeting. And so it sounds like we're ready to vote.
Ms. Dergan?
I guess I just want to clarify that it's an optional in-person meeting. Is that correct?
That's what was discussed, but I don't know. Is that how the motion's worded?
Didn't we just decide we didn't have to vote on this?
Yeah, but there's a motion.
I know there's a motion, but we could, we could, we could...
We didn't have to vote on the mural either.
Yeah, but... We didn't vote to leave. We didn't vote to go, we voted to go back.
Okay, so just somebody take the motion away, then. Can we do that?
I think, April, you actually made the motion.
No, you did, Alicia.
No, you did.
Yeah, Alicia, you did, honey.
She said the words, but you made the actual...
Yeah, I said it, but you moved it.
Oh, you're right. I moved the motion. Okay.
I think you can just table it, April, because that actually means kill it.
That's what I was thinking. So I moved to table the motion to return to in-person meetings.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. Okay, Diane, I think we're ready to vote on the tabling.
So the reason we tabled it is because we actually don't need a motion. If we decide to, I just want to make sure everyone's clear. If we decide to go to in-person meetings, even in this next one in August, we would just make that decision and publicize it. It doesn't need to be voted on. Okay, got it.
Are we ready?
Oh, yes.
Ms. Dergan?
Yes.
Mrs. Giftos?
Yes.
Dr. Gill?
Yes.
Ms. Casalonas?
Yes.
Ms. Layton?
Yes.
Mrs. Seither?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
And Mr. Bennett? He may have left us.
I can't understand why.
The fifth hour just doesn't work.
No. Okay. I think we're good to move on. So 7.6, 7.7, motion to approve the meeting minutes of June 18th, 2020, and June 25th, 2020, as presented.
Second.
Second.
And Diane, we're ready to vote.
Ms. Dergan?
Yes.
Mrs. Giftos?
Yes.
Dr. Gill?
Yes.
Ms. Casalonas?
Yes.
Ms. Layton?
Yes.
Mrs. Seither?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
Excellent. 7.8 are appointments. Sandy, do we want to do all of them as one? Or do you want to vote on each one after they're presented?
What's your typical practice?
It can go...
Depends on what time it is. She's so true.
If it's after 10:00.
Oh, welcome to the district.
Go ahead, present.
Well, I mean, we can talk about each person and then just take a vote.
Yep, that's fine. So...
Okay. Yes, please.
Okay, we have a speech-language pathologist. Amy Chang has been chosen to fill this position by creating her resignation. Ms. Chang received a BS degree in developmental psychology from Boston College and a master's of arts degree on speech-language pathology from George Washington University. She has worked as a speech-language pathologist since 2012 in several different facilities, including the Maine Educational Center for the Deaf and Hard of Hearing, Southern Maine Children's Collaborative, Capitalist School Department, and South Portland School Department. Ms. Chang will be placed on step 10 of the master's scale per the collective bargaining agreement. Recommendation is to appoint Amy Chang as a speech-language pathologist. Second position is a .8 district-wide psychologist. Jennifer Hilliard has been selected to fill this position created by a resignation. Ms. Hilliard earned her Bachelor of Science degree in Psychology from the College of Charleston and her Master's degree in Psychology from the Surrattell Graduate College. She has worked as a school psychologist in Walden, Mass., Somerville, South Carolina, and Charleston, South Carolina. Ms. Hilliard will be placed on step 6 of the master's scale per the collective bargaining agreement. Recommendation is to appoint Jennifer Hilliard as a .8 district-wide psychologist. The next position is a speech-language pathologist assistant. Megan Bailey has been nominated to fill this newly created position. Ms. Bailey received a Bachelor of Arts degree in Communication Sciences and Disorders from the University of Maine and her Master's of Arts degree in Special Ed from the University of Southern Maine. She has been employed at the Margaret Murphy Center for Children in both Auburn and Soco since 2010. Most recently, she was a speech-language assistant in the Soco facility. Ms. Bailey will be placed on step 8 of the master's scale per the collective bargaining agreement. Recommendation is to appoint Megan Bailey as a speech-language pathologist assistant. We have a high school Spanish teacher position. Teresa Quinn has been chosen to fill this position that was created due to the completion of a one-year contract. Ms. Quinn received her Bachelor of Arts degree in Spanish from Assumption College and her Master's degree in Instructional Leadership from the University of Maine and her Master's in Spanish Literature from St. Louis University in Madrid, Spain. She was a Spanish teacher in Brunswick Junior High School for seven years before transitioning into a Spanish teacher at Shevis High School for the last 24 years, when she was also the department chair. Ms. Quinn will be placed on step 31 of the Bachelor plus 15 scale per the collective bargaining agreement. Recommendation is to appoint Teresa Quinn as a high school Spanish teacher. We have a second-year probationary professionals. The following professional staff have successfully completed their first year of classroom teaching and can be moved to a second-year status. Angela Keaton, Wentworth School, third-grade teacher. Ashley Valentine, Middle School Academic Center teacher. Thank you. Thank you.
Uh, motion to approve the appointments as presented?
So moved.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion?
Congratulations and welcome.
Yeah. Yes. Believe we're ready to vote?
Ms. Durgan?
Yes.
Mrs. Giftos?
Yes.
Dr. Gill?
Yes.
Ms. Casalonis?
Yes, and welcome to the district.
Ms. Layton?
Yes.
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 Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
There we go. Excellent. And it passes. All right, last but most certainly not least, um, thank you everyone for a marathon session tonight. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved. Second.
Second. And we can just go to vote?
Ms. Durgan?
Yes.
Mrs. Giftos?
Yes.
Dr. Gill?
Yes.
Ms. Casalonis?
Yes.
Ms. Layton?
Yes.
Mrs. Seither?
Yes.
And Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Thanks guys for all your hard work.
Thanks, guys.